We are expecting Mayor Mario and Mayor Protem Rouse shortly. In their absence, we will call the meeting to order for Thursday, May 31, 2018. And then we start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, and to the stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Friedman?
Here.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rouse not yet present, Mayor Mario not yet present, Councilmember Hart?
Here.
And Councilmember Sneddon?
Here.
And now we'll start with any public comment not on the agenda?
No?
Okay, so notices?
That's right, and then the public hearings.
And then the public hearings.
Item three, fiscal year 2019 recommended operating and capital budget.
Thank you, councilmembers. We'll start this morning's budget presentation. We've got community development and the library department today, and we will start with the library department, and I'll turn it over to Library Director Jessica Cariante.
Good morning, councilmembers. Jessica Cariante, Library Director. I am here with Assistant Library Director Vanessa Christman. Together, we will be presenting the library department's fiscal year 19 budget and performance measures. Before I get started, I do want to acknowledge the stellar year that the library has had and all of the team back at the library. Over the last couple of years, we've faced a lot of challenges, made a lot of changes organizationally, and you'll see throughout our presentation, the effects of those changes, how we've really improved access to all of our services and the educational opportunities for our citizens here in Santa Barbara. So first, just going over the presentation outline for the day, I will give a brief departmental overview and then a general fund review, as well as the county library fund, and then Assistant Director Christman will review the key initiatives and performance objectives for the library, and I will wrap things up with a review of our capital program. So first, a quick look at our organizational chart. We really stripped this down for you so that you can see that the library has two management positions, the director and assistant director, who with a team of one or two people administer all of the items in the green, and then we have four supervisors for the entire library department, who do a lot more than what's listed up there, but their core services are focusing on youth services, adult services, technology, and then the county branches. Over in total, we have 35 full-time employees and between 70 to 80 hourlies at any given time. Reclassifications for the library this year. We have administratively changed their adult literacy coordinator position that went vacant to an adult education librarian. We're really excited about this change. It is going to allow this position to not just oversee the literacy department, but all adult education initiatives for the library, including things like career development and digital literacy, financial literacy, so that's a really great change for the library. We have some reclassifications still pending council approval. The library assistant classification, that is a cleanup. The library assistant is a legacy position. We do not hire into it, so we're looking just to change any positions that are currently that to the library technician. Then in our administrative program, we have an office specialist, too, at point eight. We're looking to change that to align more with other city departments and a full-time administrative specialist. This is a look at the total FTE by programs. You can see the increase of the point two in the administration program. We have a net loss in the central library program that's due to the GLEDA transition. We did absorb one full-time librarian back to the central library. In order to do that, we did cut 1.75 FTE of a library technician classification, and as you all know, July 1, GLEDA will be their own library, and so we will have a net loss of 5.35 FTE. The assistant director will be going over our performance measures that are really city-specific, so I wanted to provide you a few global statistics for our entire system. You can see the new customers, fiscal years 16 and 17 here. We've really worked to grow those in all of our libraries, and you can see consistently throughout, we have accomplished that. Programs and classes held. Over the last three years, we've made a lot of changes organizationally at the library and really focused on creating a lot more opportunities for programs and classes, and we did that by really streamlining different processes, procedures, aligning our staff with their passions as best we can to really bring more things that are available to our public. At the central library, we look to really pilot all of the different programs. You can see the exponential growth at the central library, and this year, we're happy that we're able to kit up some of those programs, and we'll be sending them off to our branches. And then the east side library, we have filled our bilingual librarian there, and so we do expect to see a lot of growth in that branch as well. And then program and class attendance, just going along with the growth in the actual classes and programs offered, I want to just say that we've changed our philosophy from just simply having very large-scale programs. We do a lot more targeted educational programs that might just have eight to 10 people, for example, in a coding class, but really targeting that we are able to have those students leave with the educational outcomes that they're striving to achieve. Overall, the library budget this year is $7.04 million. You can see that the general fund, which is comprised of the central and east side library, is at $5.74 million, or 81% of the total library, and the county library fund, which is Buellton, Solvang, Carpentry, and Montecito, is $1.3 million. Another way to look at that is the per capita expenditure from state and local funds, so this is all of the revenue that we receive that is outside of donations, so any city or government funding. So you can see we're working with a three-to-one in terms of the city versus the county libraries. So now I'll move on to reviewing the general fund, proposed changes to our original fiscal year 2019 plan. Library fines and fees. There's a downward trend throughout black gold in terms of what libraries are recouping for fines and fees. It's really due to a lot of policy changes that we've enacted from auto renewals, three-week checkouts, 25 cents per item versus a dollar for DVDs. It's really improved the accessibility of materials at the library, but we do see a decrease in that revenue. Our rents, this is a line item that reflects our rentals of our meeting room spaces. You can see a decline here as well, and we anticipate that this trend will continue. As we do more and more at our library, we are competing for the space with our public rentals, and additionally, you will hear from Ms. Christman on the increased partnerships that we've had over the course of the last two years, and that, again, we'll see a decrease due to the fact that when we partner with an agency, we are not necessarily charging them for the space. Intergovernmental. This line item represents the county per capita, as well as any large-scale grants. So you can see our original plan of $832,000. In fiscal year 18, we actually did receive $948,000, or we're projecting that number much higher. We had an increase in county per capita, and there were several one-time grants, and the thing to remember about grants is those are restricted funds. They are not monies that we can use to offset necessarily things like black gold or our materials costs. We are projecting to receive some additional grants in FY19, and that's why there is that $24,000 growth in the adjustment. Service charges. This is where you will find the library administrative fee that we charge to our county libraries. This is reflective of the loss of the GLEDA library. And a note on that, the removal of the GLEDA library from our system does not allow us to remove positions, as we still have four branch libraries that we're managing, and if you recall from our organizational chart, we do have four supervisors in six locations currently, and so we had to look elsewhere in our budget to fill that gap. Donations. This is a line item, which is, of course, donations. We are very fortunate that we have a fantastic friends group who we're projecting to receive $65,000 from in fiscal year 19. Our library foundation will be giving us just over $62,000 from the children's library endowment, and then we've had a very generous donor who has allowed us to fund our digitization project, all of our historic photographs, as well as is in that line item. Library gifts. Every year, we receive money from the Peggy Maximus Trust. This is a trust held for us at the Santa Barbara Foundation, and these monies are market values, the interest that we receive, and that income typically goes towards our materials Other revenue, this would be our book sales, and again, a downward trend. So overall, you can see close to $200,000 revenue loss from the original plan, and looking at the projected FY18 to what is recommended for FY19, it's over $300,000. Here's a closer look at some of our grants. Every year, we receive a grant from the state library. Literacy Services is one of the items that the state has continued to help fund. The $43,000 does not fund the entire program by any means, but it does help. Our Reading Together grant, that was the grant that helped start the Reading Ambassador program, and at the library, we felt that it was important to maintain those programs, as well as the staff that were generated out of that five-year grant. Family Services Grant, that is our adult literacy, helps supplement that program as well, and then this last year, we received two adult education block grants, one for digital literacy that will, that helped start our Career Resource Center, SBPL Works, and then one in five, which helped start our dyslexia division in our literacy division. And you can see in fiscal year 19, we are projecting to receive an additional $50,000 in adult education block grant funds to help those continue. And we received several grants that are smaller in size, and you'll find those in the miscellaneous line item. You'll see in our P3s that we have put in there a goal of applying for a certain number of grants every year, as it really helps us to expand what we're able to do. Moving on to the general fund expenditures, the salaries and benefits line item is increasing slightly, and that is due to cost of living increases, benefit increases, and the, some inequity corrections. The reclassification changes that we discussed earlier were all either a net, there was no additional funding needed, or we took from the hourly budget to balance those. Supplies and services. Again, this is where a lot of our grant monies are allocated to, so you can see the projected is much higher, $643,000, and that's due to one-time monies from grants. Allocated costs, these are costs charged to us by other city departments, and such as IT, custodial, things of that nature. Special projects. We are not anticipating any special projects in fiscal year 19. This year, we did have a security enhancement in access control at the central library, and that's what that $50,000 went towards. Book acquisitions. As I spoke to our loss of revenue in the previous slides, this is where we ultimately ended up having to balance the budget. We did cut $100,000 from our proposed original plan in order to balance the library department So I'll move on to our proposed fee changes. We only have one at the library this year. We check out wireless hotspots at the library. You can actually check out the internet, and we realized that we did not have a replacement fee on our schedule for these. We typically do not lose many as they're churned off after they're not checked back in for a few days, so they, they just become a paperweight, so people tend to bring them back, but we do want to have a replacement fee on the books that we can charge. So that wraps up the general fund portion of the budget presentation, and I'll move on to the county library fund. And the county library fund, we look at the entire fund together, not each branch individually, so this budget is really reflective of the removal of the GLEDA library. Overall expenditures, salaries did uptick for all of the smaller branches, but because we removed the GLEDA library from the fund, you see that large adjustment needing to be made. Same with our supplies and services. For the smaller branches, all of these upticked just a little bit, but in terms of balancing the FY19 county fund, we did have to remove the GLEDA library. And the GLEDA library was a larger operation than the four remaining branches, so that's reflected here. Allocated costs, again, this is just the removal of the GLEDA library. They did pay for custodial and things of that nature. Special projects, no special projects for the county libraries. And then again, the book acquisitions, the removal of the GLEDA library is the larger operation in the county, will remove over $340,000 from the county library fund book acquisition budget. Again, a downward trend for fines and fees, but this is reflective of removing the GLEDA library. Room rentals, the GLEDA library, again, being removed from the system. The Carpentry Branch is the only remaining library with a room rental. Intergovernmental, so pulling out all of the funding that went towards the GLEDA library, as well as the decrease in the county per capita that all of the small branches are receiving this year. Service charges, so again, just pulling out the copier fees that the GLEDA library would pay. Donations, pulling out the GLEDA library friends and other decreased donations throughout the county system. The county library fund does not receive any library gifts, and then pulling out the book sale for the county, for the GLEDA library. Of note is the difference in the, the budget for the county libraries is $1.3 million, and the recommended revenues currently are just under $900,000. The county is looking for how to fund that gap currently, but that is of some concern, and so looking at the estimated year-end reserves and trusts, apologies for how small this is, you can see the fiscal year 18, what we are projecting to use for each branch, and then what's left over. And looking forward to FY19, Solvang, Montecito, and Carpentry Branches all have larger deficits than what remains in their trust or reserve balances. So now, I would like to hand it off to the Assistant Library Director, and she'll be reviewing our P3s, objectives, goals, and initiatives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Mario and councilmembers. My name is Vanessa Christman, and I'm the Assistant Library Director. I'm here today to talk to you about the library's accomplishments, programmatic challenges, and our ideas for addressing those challenges, and setting our sights on building a future-facing library that is an indispensable community resource. But before I begin, I have to say that it's frequently a challenge to capture the library's true impact in statistics. Actually, we do spend quite a lot of time recording statistics for a number of agencies, notably city P3s, the California State Library, and the American Library Association. Statistics are effective at quantifying our effort while only superficially addressing the depth of our impact. For instance, one homework help program that only attracts four attendees for the day could teach a student a concept that allows them to improve their performance in school and sets them on a path for academic and financial success later in life. For this presentation, I'm relying on our numbers to hopefully tell a compelling story, but for staff, the best measure of our impact is in the people whose lives have been changed by being a part of our community of patrons and supporters. Our director touched on the many ways in which we've exceeded the goals which we set for ourselves in our 2018 P3s, and I've summarized them above, but we'll briefly revisit in the next few slides. So this is our programs and services. We've been consistently increasing our programming and services. The prior fiscal year saw a large increase in our youth services programming, and while we continued on this path for growth for youth services, the increase in our adult programming is really a standout number from our 2018, yeah, 2018 P3s. On average, the library holds four programs, trainings, or events specifically marketed to adults per day, and the topics are diverse, from computer training and resume review to poetry classes and book clubs, and a community-wide, multi-generational reading series, SB Reads, that we are bringing back again this year. And while we've been working on improving the amount and diversity of programs we plan inside of our walls, we've also been increasing the programs and events we lead or participate in outside of our walls by more than double. Our staff plan and attend outreach events for adults, teens, and children. As an example, I am particularly proud of, one of our recently planned outreach programs that is receiving national attention is our book club held in partnership with the Ridley Tree Cancer Center at Sansom for patrons undergoing treatment for cancer and their caregivers. If I had to pick a standout program type from this year, it would be our STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics programs. These have more than tripled, and they engage primarily children and teens and help support local educational institutions and their own focus on STEM education. Not only have staff increased the amount of programs they're conducting, they're working with new partners in order to plan and conduct relevant community-specific offerings, such as our Ray Ford Trail Talk Series and our programs for adults and caregivers of children on the autism spectrum. And while these are a sample of the feel-good stories and impressive numbers from our P3s, we do have some challenges to overcome in order to better serve the community, and I'm going to discuss that next. The first and major challenge is a decline in library visits as measured by door count. Starting in the summer of 2016, the amount of visitors specifically to the central library has decreased pretty steadily. While we have not formally surveyed patrons about this decline, based on the timing of the decline and the feedback from patron comment cards and staff members, museum construction is a likely contributing factor, given the road and pedestrian path blockages. Another piece of feedback to measure the decline centers on parking fees, as library programs often exceed the free time limit in the adjacent garages. As previously mentioned, this is one of the reasons why we place such a high value on outreach, as we meet patrons where they are, as opposed to expecting them to always come back into the library. Another way we've approached this problem is by redoubling our efforts to provide engaging library materials in a variety of formats. And that brings me to our collection development framework. Collection development is really where we put the science in library science. We have tools for analyzing which materials get checked out, or which materials sit on the shelf for longer periods of time than we'd like, and we use those tools to determine which types of books and materials we should be selecting and purchasing to best meet the demands of the community. And we adjust these ratios throughout the year. Basically, collection development is a human algorithm for material selection, and in our efforts, are very much paying off. In fact, they're paying off so well that we can't keep up with the demand. This is a chart of materials expenditures per service area, with central and east side ahead of the pack. Despite these expenditures, the amount of holds we filled, though, is almost 70,000. These are patrons requesting materials from another branch or another black gold library that we don't have on the shelf that does not meet their, and that does not meet their specific need. And speaking of not quite meeting the materials' needs of patrons, this is our holds ratio for popular titles. This measures the amount of people waiting in line for a specific book to be available to them for checkout. On our most popular and in-demand titles, we're falling, far short of an industry standard of three-to-one for holds processing. Basically, for every one title, we should only have three people waiting in line for it, as we would have sufficient copies to meet patron demand, but these are just print materials. Let's take a look at our electronic ones. While we're expending a higher proportion of our materials budget on digital materials than ever before, it's still difficult for us to keep up with the popularity of these formats as well. At any given time, we have more than 20,000 materials checked out to Santa Barbara patrons, and we've had more than 2,000 holds requests in the past 60 days. Believe it or not, holds are actually a problem for digital materials as well, as with, specifically with our largest ebook and e-audiobook provider, Overdrive. Checking out an ebook or e-audiobook isn't an instantaneous thing, as our titles have licensing restrictions. Our average wait time for these very popular materials is currently 44 days. And while we are concerned about our ability to meet patron demand, an increase in demand in use is generally a positive trend. For the last year, we've seen a steady monthly increases in the amount of materials we circulate, and specifically, this 8% number is from April to May of this year. We've, so that's, and it's been steadily increasing month to month, and this is only in physical print materials. Another exponential increase is in the amount of Wi-Fi sessions in our libraries. Our projected 2018 numbers are more than 130% higher than what we originally projected, which means we are an excellent force in connecting the community in more than one way. And now that we've discussed challenges and responses, I'm excited to preview what's next for us in the upcoming year. As administration, we are really focusing on our efforts to improve our staff, as our staff are working to improve the community. We've implemented a number of new programs, and we're already seeing excellent results. For instance, we recently concluded a round of staff-led mini-grants, where staff pitched some new ideas to administration and supervisors for potential funding. From these grants, we're starting a new and entirely staff-led program called Make SB, which is currently soliciting up-and-coming musical performers to provide them with the library as a venue to perform. We're also providing young adults and teens with a venue for safe after-hours entertainment, and our kickoff for Make SB is June 8 at the library, and we're very excited about it. We also have two additional mini-grants in progress for staff cultural awareness training and a new multimedia camp for teens. While we're already extremely successful at receiving grants, we've decided to track our success at grants, at receiving grants, administering grants, and grant writing, and we've included grant writing as a performance objective for all supervisory staff as well. We recognize the value of leveraging our resources and bringing in other funders to help us make a greater impact in the community, and we think it will be valuable for, to better measure and sell that success as it's a large part of our jobs. To return to collection development, we've decided to put our heads together to come up with ways to measure the success in responding to the community's needs via our collections. So we've added measures of the percentage of new materials that get checked out within the first year, the amount of time patrons spend waiting, and the amount of time that patrons spend waiting for their requested Overdrive e-resources. This will help us to determine if we're on the mark or need to better reallocate our stretched collection budget in a smarter and more responsive way. We're tracking online program distribution as well. We plan and conduct so many excellent programs that sometimes it's a hardship for members of the community to make it into the library to actually experience all of these programs. In the wake of the Thomas Fire and Montecito debris flow, and our subsequent community programming specific to those events, we started to record these programs and put them online for all members of the community to see, and the response was so positive from this that we have decided to make it a measure. And we're already experiencing, experimenting with our new Padcaster devices at some of our larger programs, and we're going to start recording far more often in a wider cross-section of all library programs, so all members of the community and people from other communities can actually experience what we're putting on at the library. And did you know that our most popular posts on social media are ones that feature our staff and behind-the-scenes glances at the library? And speaking of online outreach, we want to measure online engagement as a way to track the success at our efforts on social media and with our email newsletters. We have an engaging electronic newsletter, and we're in the process of creating a fully Spanish-language version of the newsletter as well, so we're starting to record and track how the community responds to our posts and in our, the way we utilize these mediums. We're also redoubling our efforts to expand programming and services at the east side library. We recently hired a new branch librarian at east side, and we're bringing a dedicated children's librarian over to east side in early July. Because we're building staff capacity at east side, we're also adding new programmatic objectives, as well such as computer literacy classes, early literacy support in families, for families, and a very, very exciting new grant-funded program aimed at Spanish-language workforce development in the wake of so many job losses in the informal cash economy due to the Thomas Fire and Montecito debris flow. And finally, we're creating a measure to ensure that no fewer than 40% of our community outreach participation is reaching outreach participation is reaching diverse and underrepresented segments of our community. That means attending more Spanish-language events and events targeted to people on the lower end of the socioeconomic scale. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I will conclude the presentation with a review of our capital program for 2019. So first, a couple of our funded projects. We will be renovating our staff space. You've heard our facility manager for the city discuss this project. It's very exciting for all of our team. It'll be interesting to find where we place our entire library team during this process. However, it's well worth the time. Our Central Library ADA-compliant elevator is also a very exciting project and one that we're excited to find out where it will land. Will it be on the outside of the building, in the middle of the building? Where will it go? But it's desperately needed. We should have a picture of the stroller brigade, because really, that tells the story. It takes sometimes 30 minutes for everyone to get down to the children's library for Baby and Me or other classes. Some of our unfunded priorities, we're hopeful that the East Side Library will receive the minor renewal that's being discussed in lieu of the Metro C funding. It is well-deserved in this building, and as well as having the maintenance improvements, we hope to also improve some of the functionality and flexibility of the space as we did at the Central Library. The roof terrace, this has just been on our bucket list for a very long time. Creating a space on the upper patio that would allow for expanded programming and classes and rental opportunities is something that is a priority for the library. And then the teen space. Our children's library has been an exponential success. It's really reached every goal that we have set for it, and then our children reach the ages of 11 or 12 and say, "Where do I go?" So we definitely are looking at the upper level of the Central Library to find a space for them. But we have a lot of needs at the Central Library. We get a lot of requests for meeting spaces, classroom spaces. So we need to take a look at that entire upper level. It's kind of the last space at the library that is public and can be renovated. But we're very hopeful that a teen space is included in that project. And then the big-ticket item for the library, the library plaza. And I'll be discussing this in more detail at the Finance Committee on June 4th at 1:00, so I'll just give a brief overview today. This picture here is the bird's-eye view from Annapamoo of the HLC-approved design. You can see how it completely flattens out and then includes the reflecting pools that are hearkened back to the 1930 era, when the library had those pools. This is what the current conditions of the plaza are, and even if the museum was not staging on the property, you can see the planters, and it's dark, and it's just not conducive to really doing any programming. And more than anything, it's not accessible. We actually cannot use the space for any type of classes or programming due to the fact that it's not accessible to everyone. So we just simply cannot use it. This is a direct view of the proposed north entry. You can see how it really highlights the beautiful Faulkner Gallery and the main entrance to the Central Library. This is a bird's-eye view of the library plaza from library avenue. And again, you can see how it completely... This project is an ADA project. It's really about the accessibility issues. And the other great thing about the project is that currently, the lower plaza is a combined pedestrian and vehicular zone. It's actually quite dangerous. This project would delineate pedestrian from vehicle use, and so that is something that would be a great value to the library. The library plaza is in the heart of Santa Barbara. The library and the Faulkner Gallery are both historic landmarks, and the plaza project would bring many benefits to this area, everything from book festivals and performances, rental income, and looking at the various places throughout town, such as the Sunken Gardens, anywhere from $210 to $420 an hour is what rental income is for properties. So the library could absolutely generate revenue from this project as well. And that concludes the library department's overview of the fiscal year 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Cariante. Are there questions from the council before we go to public comment? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Cariante, so going back to the plaza project, what is our status with the museum's timeline and where are we going in terms of starting a capital program, either for that or getting back to the situation where we can finally, you know, have that property back and move forward on your project?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Rouse. Currently, the museum is staging on the property. That agreement expires August 2018. We have not had a formal request to renew that agreement. However, we are anticipating to receive one. In our meetings with the museum, I know that they would like the property for two, maybe three, additional years. And currently, there is no revenue that's being generated from the property in letting them stage on it. They've been on it for just over two years, or just coming up on two years now. And currently, we're looking at the appraisal value of the property and what would be a realistic rental if they were to stay. In terms of the actual campaign for the plaza project, that has not begun. We are looking at... I think we need to do construction drawings for the project to determine the true costs of the plaza.
Well, it's concerning, because we've talked about it for a long, long time for a lot of reasons, and I've seen Mr. Campbell back there in the back of the audience and have these discussions, but it really is the center of the cultural heart of town, and it's a public asset that frankly, being used for construction staging doesn't make any sense to me to extend it. I don't know what the big picture's going to be politically on that, but I'm interested in having it back for our development into what it's going to be. My two cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Hart?
I had a question about the book and digital material acquisitions. I understand the need to cut the budget by the $100,000 this year in relation to all the other challenges that are coming up, but can you give me a sense about the five-year trend of that? That's a key element to maintaining a viable system, is investing in new materials. So can you help me understand what a five-year trend of that looks like? Is this a unique, one-time cut of $100,000? Is it part of a trend of reducing acquisition investment? How is the Galida Libraries separation from us? Are they investing, you know, as appropriately, or are they also cutting because of tight fiscal situations? And is that consistent through the black gold system? What is the trend for acquisition of materials?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Hart, the trend for materials budgets for the city libraries in particular, if you look at historical numbers, the collection budget is typically used to balance the budget. So if you look at a 10-year trend of the library, you can see that if there was a need to cut, the materials budget would go up and down depending on the available revenues every year. In terms of looking at black gold-wide, everyone is feeling the crunch in terms of decreasing revenues, and we really have never recuperated from the loss of state funding. And the digital materials that the Assistant Director discussed, we currently are putting between 30 and 40% of our materials budget into those items. Now, a digital collection does not replace the users who are using print materials. It's an entirely new set of users. So we have this whole new collection that we're trying to sustain without additional income, and the costs of the materials rise every year, and the costs of the staff to process them continue to rise. So the trend should be that we're increasing every year. Last year, we looked to set some standards in our own system, and the City of Santa Barbara is meeting that median standard for materials budgets. Our branch libraries this year, they will be moving into meeting a standard of, I believe it was $3.67 per capita. That being said, when you have a community like Santa Barbara that seeks education and lifelong learning to the degree that they do, it's really hard to meet the continuing demand. And as we partner with the school district more and try to help and be partners in that educational front, it's just more and more demand on that materials budget.
And Councilmember Hart, if I could just... I think Ms. Cariante is being a little too kind to our partners. We're one of the net buyers of materials within the system to the benefit of everyone else. And so, I mean, we're doing our part. We could always be doing more. We wish we had more, but others aren't doing their fair share as well. And so that is a strain on the entirety of the black gold system and within the county branches. Would you agree with that?
I would definitely agree with that, Mr. Casey. And in reference to the Galida Library, they have historically been a net lender to tens of thousands of items... I'm sorry, net borrower. They would borrow from our system first and then go out to black gold. I can't speak for their collection budget. In looking at their proposed budget for FY19, it does look like they're staying status quo as to what they had this fiscal year, which is far below what they need to sustain their 90,000-plus service area. And so, Mr. Casey is absolutely correct. It is a challenge throughout black gold in terms of who is buying all of the materials and is it really fair that just a couple of libraries within the system provide the lion's share, when some other libraries might focus on staying open more hours instead of buying materials, because they can borrow them from libraries like Santa Barbara?
Yeah, that really puts the nail... That describes it so well. So what happens? What is the dynamic for addressing that? You meet with the other library zone administrators, and you meet with the other folks in the black gold system, and you say, "Hey, some of us are paying for this, others of us are taking advantage of this system." What happens in that dialogue? Do the people who understand that they're taking advantage of the system unfairly say, "Yes, we understand that, and we're going to do something to address it," or do they disagree about the facts and say, "That's not true"?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Hart, this has been an ongoing conversation for the last... The entire time I've been in the state of California, which is almost six years now in terms of the equity of funding for materials, and materials offset in the black gold system. We have hired a consultant, again, to sit down with the directors to come up with a funding formula that represents and possibly rewards libraries who are net lenders. And that's a discussion that we'll be having throughout this year. All of the library directors are very aware that as the dollars shrink, they're fighting the battle of providing the materials to their users or providing the libraries to be open, and then the increasing staffing costs as well. So we're all making those choices and discussing them together, but some are stepping up in a much larger degree, and Santa Barbara is absolutely one of those libraries.
Okay. Well, just... If I could follow up on that as well, just to kind of underscore, and we've had a couple of conversations with the council, so I think you're getting familiar with the challenges we're facing, but Ms. Cariante's really been pushing this issue for a number of years, that without kind of this equitable contribution to buying the collection, we're all starting to hurt. It's a challenge, because at the branch level, as she mentioned, their mindset is, "We get it, but we can't afford to buy books. We want to keep our hours open." And so they prioritize their budgets elsewhere. And then the other thing that we had a slide here earlier is that about the last five years, we've been bleeding down the reserves of all the different branches. That's what's kept this together, just by the fact that we had built up reserves. And the pressure we're all feeling now is that those reserves are gone, and so it's really kind of that crucial point. But the collection system, as Ms. Cariante says, that's one of the things we unfortunately toggle here within the city, but still maintain a reasonable-sized collection budget. The other branches are toggling with very little to no collection budget. But we've been pushing that issue and asking people to step up, but they're having to make their own policy choices. So who is the other net contributor in the system? Who is another... You said city, it's Santa Barbara.
Yes, so the Central Library in our zone is a net contributor. It's interesting, when you look at the black gold system, the Slow County libraries provide a very large contribution, almost $1 million, to their materials budget, but they're a net borrower, just in terms of their users are very savvy, and they use a lot of materials, but they do provide a huge portion of the collection. The Santa Maria Library doesn't provide as many dollars into a materials collection, but they do lend. They're a net lender as well. So those are the big ones.
Okay. Well, it's complicated, and I understand the pressure and the need to toggle the acquisition budget based on fiscal realities, but it's the seed corn of the library. And so when you start eating that, you are destroying the system by keeping hours open, and that doesn't make any sense. But making that case to our partners is the challenge of this. And in an era of scarcity, that's just a very difficult conversation to have, is you start eating the seed corn, because people are starving. So I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Councilmember Dominguez?
Looking at the org chart, do any of these positions have duties akin to a business manager or finance manager?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Dominguez, currently, we do not have a business manager at the library. The two management positions are the Assistant Director and the Library Director.
And so who does those traditional roles? Is that you or one of the assistants?
We have an admin analyst who helps develop the budget, but in terms of budget decision, budget-making, that would be myself.
And you mentioned with Galida that their budget for adding to the collections is low. Can you expound on that? What does that mean exactly?
So they have... Mayor Mario, Councilmember Dominguez, they have a service area that is similar or almost exactly, actually a little bit more than the City of Santa Barbara. The City of Santa Barbara is putting in over a half a million dollars, and the Galida Library for fiscal year 18, I believe, was $245,000, so close to half of what we put in in order to fill the demand. And again, they're a very user-heavy system. Every system's different, and some libraries don't place a lot of holds and things like that. The Galida Library does. And so there, like I said, you can tell they're not meeting the demand of their patrons based on the number of books they have to borrow from other libraries.
And when you talk about a service area, what does that mean?
That means the County of Santa Barbara determined a Zone 4 for the Galida Library as they're leaving our library system and did attribute a geography to them. It's everything in their city limits, their CSA 3, and then it's about 60,000 more people than was in their city. And so that would be their service area. It's the people that they... There's fear of influence in terms of library services. So it's Isla Vista and everything up to our city border.
So they include an Alida?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's roughly 90,000 population?
Yes.
And then our service area is also 90,000?
Yes.
And we go up to the Montecito service area, or is that included in our service area?
When you look at just geography and in terms of how the county delineates the monies, and that's what we're determining the service area, and so the City of Santa Barbara is just the City of Santa Barbara, but we actually service the entire zone or the county, because we are providing a bulk of the materials and things like that. But specifically 90,000, yeah.
And does the service area... That service area include Montecito residents?
No.
Okay. Does it follow the city limits?
Yes.
Okay. The slide on the county funding and the $300,000, I believe...
Slide 20.
Just slide 20. $372,000. So what does that mean? Is that a number that the city's going to have to come up with? What does projected addition mean?
Those are the reserves that they... The top line, the estimated FY17 trust and reserve balances is what they held effectively on June 30th, 2017, within their reserve or trust balances. For this fiscal year, the one we're currently in, in order to balance, we're projecting that they'll need to use the middle line, leaving a balance of the $365,000 in Galida, 45 in Buellton, and so on. And so looking forward to FY19, which is not on this slide, solving Montecito and carpenteria... is not on this slide, solving Montecito and Carpinteria, their budgets surpass what they have left in their reserve balances.
So, their upcoming expenditures would surpass their reserves?
Correct.
Okay. And this is something that we've communicated to the county?
We have been communicating this lack of reserves over the course of the last five years. Specifically, this year, we met with all city managers multiple times to give them that projection. I think the first meeting we had on the fiscal year 19 budget was in October of 2017.
And it was all the city managers for these areas?
Yes, and the community services director for the county, so that he could participate in all of the discussions, as well as the Montecito library, who does not have a city manager.
And were finance managers or finance directors involved?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because some of the comments I've heard from other cities, it seems like there was either miscommunications or not enough communications. And I wondered if it was because non-finance professionals were trying to cover financial territory and it wasn't effective, or if it was maybe more political. But it does seem like, you know, and that's why I was curious if we have a business manager or finance director, or how libraries are structured. And when I'm looking at, looking ahead at kind of the trends and more online borrowing, I'm wondering what that entails for libraries in terms of, are we going to become more financial institutions? Are there more contracts and larger-scale trends we have to keep in mind and have to be ready for those challenges potentially?
Yeah. And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, if I could just follow up about the communication with the other cities and the county. It has included the city managers. We've invited their finance directors. I've been involved. Bob Samario's been represented from the city, as well as our finance director. We have been very clear in communicating directly with the management entities for the libraries. The Friends groups, we don't know how well the communication has occurred amongst the city managers and finance directors with their Friends groups. And so, that might be where some of the frustration is coming about not understanding the issues and such. Our feeling has been, we are contracting with the county to provide services to these branches, and we deal with the governmental entity. And so, that's been our focus and effort. And we have certainly been at the table for years explaining this impending doom, which is now coming home to roost. And we've been ringing the bell, as Ms. Cadiante says, for years now, that we're just spending reserves that are eventually going to run out, and then what's going to happen? And now, we're at the what's going to happen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Thanks for covering, I had some of the same questions that Councilmember Dominguez has. But on this slide, so what is the status of the, the proposal that the county had to change the funding for the coming year? I know that was a discussion at our council. And there was some talk of the board trying to agendize an item on June 5th. Could you give us an update on that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, you sent a letter, the mayor sent a letter on behalf of the council that followed up my letter as well, explaining the situation. The Board of Supervisors has scheduled a meeting for, or they have a meeting on June 5th in which this item is scheduled for. I've spoken with the CEO of the county directly about this. And at this point today, we are hopeful that they will restore funding at least to the status quo level. If you recall, that's the 13.5% administrative fee, as opposed to what we feel would be a more appropriate 18% fee. But at least, it would be restoring us back to the status quo level. And, and we're, we're hearing positive things that that will occur, that, that they'll, they'll restore that funding, but we won't know until Tuesday.
And then, going back to slide 20 here, I'm still trying to understand that, that 372,816, is that, I'm trying to understand, is that, is that what we're having to come up with from ourselves? Because if those numbers, if they're not balanced, then, then where's that extra funding coming from?
Madam Mayor, maybe I'll take a stab at this. So, look at the top. This is the year-end reserves for each of the branches. And so, that's what we're talking about. So, at the end of FY17, for instance, GLEDA had $614,000 in reserves, Buellton had 74,000 and that such. We, again, contract with the county to provide services, and we get county per capita money that comes in, whatever city contribution comes in, but they want to be open a certain number of hours, and it costs a certain amount to run that project. Therefore, we had to take in that middle line from those reserves to help operate those branch libraries for this last fiscal year, which then left you a balance on the bottom. So, basically, we used $370,000 of existing reserves from the different branches to run operations this last year. And the problem is, is except for GLEDA, they're starting to run out of reserves to, to make that nut. And so, that's where the problem is. How's Carpinteria going to fund their library coming up? How's Montecito going to fill that gap? How are Buellton and Solvay going to keep filling that gap?
And then, we do contribute overall, we had the discussion earlier, we still, even at the 13.5, we're still contributing to all those, and the goal is to get us to the full 18% or so. I have a couple of, just kind of other questions. The first is, in terms of the, following up on the discussion on who's using and how it's getting, how different branches are using the library, different branches, is on our electron, our online, do other branches get to use our online services? Or how does that work if they're outside? Because we have a library for the city of Santa Barbara that's going through the city of Santa Barbara. So, is it just limited to users of Black Gold, or can anywhere in the country use our online services?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Friedman, that too is a complicated answer. So, it's, depends on what it is. Our digital downloads, such as our eBooks, we do have a Black Gold wide system that we all contribute to, so Overdrive. But then, we also, as a system of Santa Barbara, purchase materials that are only available when you have a Santa Barbara library card. So, in order to access some of our databases, our electronic tools, maybe additional Overdrive titles, our Hoopla titles, you would need to log in with your Santa Barbara library card. And that's the system-wide. So, that includes Carpinteria, Buellton, Solvay. So, again, they benefit by having more access to those items. So, it, it depends on which item it is.
Okay. So, so they would, in the, in the zone that we manage, would have access to all of the ones that are specific to us, but then, so, so now GLEDA's outside, so they wouldn't have access to the additional?
That is correct.
And then, another question is, I found as a library user that the Express, there's Express Books, where you can check out some of the hot titles for a week and you can't renew them. How effective is that? And should we look at, is it be something to advocate for more of those types of books so we can get a quicker circulation around?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Friedman, that's actually a really interesting question. We did away with our Express collections last year.
Oh, I haven't used it for a year, so. I found it was useful, though, so.
It's really to expand the access to all of the items. When you have items that are just express and sitting on a shelf, they're not filling those holds. And as the assistant director discussed, our holds ratios are not where we want them to be. So, we need to have as many items available to fill those before we can look at having Express collections.
Great. That's all my questions.
Okay. Mr. Hart, you had a follow-up on the last conversation?
I just have one more question. Mr. Casey, you mentioned that the way the city approaches communication with the branches is to deal directly with the management in those local governments, or Montecito in a different case. Why the tactical decision not to, or maybe I'm oversimplifying and not getting it right, communicating with the Friends? That, you know, I, I understand that that's time-consuming, but that, that is politically an interesting decision in the context of us trying to work with the county. That, you know, our story not being clearly communicated to the Friends causes political confusion. So, maybe you can help me with that.
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Hart, I'll take a stab at answering that question. So, we do, our commitment is to discuss and make sure all of the city managers have the information needed to make the budgetary decisions, as they're the ones who'll be presenting to their councils. That being said, after every council, after every meeting with the city managers, the, we have library advisory committee meetings, which is the county library advisory committee, where most of the Friends presidents are on that committee, or a member of a Friends group is on that committee. And I always include in my quarterly report what we discussed at the city manager meeting. So, there is that effort. We do explain things at the library advisory committee. Now, in terms of meeting with every single Friends group on a monthly basis, as you saw on our organizational chart, we have two managers, and there simply is not enough time for that. And in, in reality, Friends groups really should be funding the innovations, the extras. So, the discussion of the operation and personnel or the actual budget really is more appropriate to discuss with the city manager. And we do try to present the broad strokes of all of the information at the library advisory committee meetings. However, it is complicated sometimes. And, but we are doing our best to make sure we include everyone. It's not a strategic decision to exclude anyone.
Yeah, and I apologize if I gave you that impression. I guess it's a little bit of a frustration, though, in that we would hope that the cities are discussing with their Friends groups about what they're trying to do for their local branch library. It's a lot to ask us to manage five branches with five city managers and finance directors, as well as Friends groups and other interested parties. We would like a little more cohesion from our partners in that regard. Yeah, and I understand that. I understand the strain on the ability to do it. Don't think you'd need to do it every month, but, but I also think that there is tremendous miscommunication that's happening, and we're suffering from that. And so, you know, you either communicate, or you don't communicate and have other people communicate for you, and deal with the ramifications of that. So, I think that's a challenge. And then, I just, I want to defend, we have communicated. We have done a lot of meeting and discussion. Yes, you have communicated to the city managers and to the, and to the folks, and you have communicated through the library board and, and the county library board. But I, you know, we persistently, continuously get emails and have conversations with people in the Friends who don't understand how this works. And that I don't disagree with you with. But I think Ms. Cadiante and her staff and Ms. Antil have been meeting with Friends groups and trying. That's fair enough. I understand you can't get everybody on the same page all of the time, but I think that is a problem.
Okay. Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you. What, what is the current funding structure for acquisitions? Does each branch just decide for themselves how much they feel they can contribute in a given year? Or is there a, you know, we're over a million people served altogether? And is it, is it proportional to the number of people served? And then, along those lines with Overdrive, are you tracking which branch that a patron originally signed up with while they're checking out the Overdrive? Is there a tracking of, of that?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Sneddon, there, the funding structure is one that last year, we looked at setting some standards. So, it had, it had been based on what could be afforded previously. But as Mr. Casey explained, as fewer libraries are buying materials, it's become more and more challenging to sustain the whole system. And so, we did look to set the expectation of a certain just median standard. We're not looking to be the Beverly Hills or Santa Monica, but just a state median. And we phased that in over a couple of years, and this year, we're looking to reach that standard. In terms of the Overdrive tracking, yes, we can see who, from what branch is checking out materials.
Thank you. And then, I had one other question about the museum plaza. So, what, what are the alternatives there? Have constructions underway, and all of that is staged there? And I mean, I know we're going to talk more in detail about it, but just overview of, what other options are there?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Sneddon, the options for the museum in terms of where to store the property that they're, that they have currently on Library Plaza, that's something that we need, we need to discuss and look at. I wouldn't be able to tell you where they should stage if they weren't staging on the library's property. I can only speak to the impacts to the library based on that staging.
Thank you, Ms. Sneddon. We'll go to public comment. So, Ann Howard, you're first, from the Santa Barbara Public Library Foundation, and you have two minutes.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Mario and Councilmembers. I'm the president of the board of the Santa Barbara Public Library Foundation, and I'm also a volunteer homework helper. And that's where I see children come every day to the library. I watch their lives change. I hear the giggle of a first grader who's reading The Cat in the Hat. He can read, and he knows he's got a new superpower. I see the third grader ace her timetables because of using counting materials that come from the library. She's on her way. And so's her mother, who's practicing her English with one of our literacy tutors. I even see people registering to vote for people like you. I see a Santa Barbara version of what the American Library Association proclaims, libraries ensure freedom to read, to view, to speak, and to participate. The Santa Barbara Education Foundation recognized this with the 2018 Hope Award, presented to our library for heroic programming during the twin disasters, and also for daily, consistent, year-long advancement of public education and literacy. When you fund the public library, you know this, you make this possible. You build community, you foster democracy, you change lives. There is no other public space in our town like our library. That's why our foundation is working to fund our library's big projects. We raised $4 million for the children's library, and we're still growing the 1.1 children's endowment. And you were there at the start with $500,000. Thank you for that. Now, the plaza. We stand ready to restore the plaza. It's a blight in the middle of our historic downtown. We aim to make it an asset, a public asset, and that means public money. Our foundation is ready to partner with the city on this $3 million project, just as we did for the children's library. We would like to see from you a significant kickstart of Measure C funding in this next fiscal year to get the delayed plaza project back on track. Measure C, that's what happens when informed voters participate in our democracy. Maybe some of them registered vote at the library. Libraries change lives, and libraries change communities, and so can you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Rouse has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. If really tough decisions have to be made in terms of operations, let me talk about volume, purchasing materials versus hours, if that comes down to that, where would the board sit on a situation like that? What would be the, I mean, obviously, you're very involved in the operations as well as a volunteer, so hours are important. If you had to make that decision, where, what would you, what would you lean towards?
Well, as the foundation, we don't get to make decisions about programming. We take the lead from our director. So, I don't think it's appropriate for me to make that choice.
Okay.
Our job is funding capital projects so that the programs can go on. Without the space, you're not going to have an after-school program, or any of the STEM training, or any of the adult literacy programs. You have to have the building, and you have to be able to get inside that building. Right now, the plaza is, doesn't make that easy. And there's a whole long list of projects to fund beyond the plaza, which I didn't name because I knew I only had two minutes. So.
No, and I get that, and I appreciate, I appreciate your efforts. We won't be making that decision either. That's going to be on the director. But I just, as we get into these, these numbers, they get thinner and thinner operationally, just, and, you know, clearly, we're very interested in the capital projects moving forward. We talked about that for quite a while now, so.
We'll keep talking.
Well, Ms. Howard, did, was there anything else you wanted to say? We want to thank you for the work you've done, and we're all so proud of the children's library. Thanks.
I know we're all proud of the same thing. And, and I know we'll be talking about how to spend Measure C funds. That's really what I came here to address today.
All right.
Because we're in the capital business.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Stern, you're next, followed by Milt.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank you as well for committing to raising the funds for this project for the plaza. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Stern, you'll be followed by Milt Hess, and then Joan Young. And it's so nice to see you. Been a long time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Jim Stern. I'm on the board of the Santa Barbara Public Library Foundation. I'm a new member. Second only to the feeling that the library is an stodgy old place, full of dusty old dead trees, is the feeling that it is home to the homeless. Parents don't want to bring their children, grandparents don't want to bring their grandchildren, because it is a place where they will be exposed to people who smell bad, sleep in the street, mumble to themselves, and it is the physical property of the plaza that lends to that. But this is not your grandfather's library. This is a place that is on track to putting on 5,000 public events and classes this year. It has dedicated itself to children. It has dedicated itself to technology, putting on programs for animatronics, for computing, for coding, for kids, for adults. It is a switched-on institution, but the impression in the public's eye is not there yet. So, I'm donating my time and energy, from family and work, to going out and getting private funds. I am getting in people's faces, asking them to donate to support the plaza. I want it to become an open, safe I want it to become an open, safe space for children, and for kids and young mothers, for events, for the arts, for entertainment, to bring people back to the center of town and make it not a construction site. I cannot directly vote on public funds to support the plaza, but you can, so I am here in your face to ask that you do just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hess, come on up.
Mayor Murillo, members of City Council, good morning. My name is Milt Hess, and I'm here today in my role as vice chair of the city's library board. I was I was going to repeat the assistant director's points about the accomplishments of the library, so I'm not going to do that. And instead, I'd like to address a couple of items that have come up in the discussion since she finished. One one item is the downtrend in the number of people visiting the library, possibly because, probably because of the impact of the art museum's use of the plaza. I'm simply going to repeat a request that the library board has sent to you in writing, and that is that the, when the museum requests the extension of its use of the plaza, that you, as acting as a council, review that decision, because it needs to be aired publicly. And I would I would really encourage you to do that. I'm not going to say, don't extend it, but there should be terms and conditions that are favorable to the city, and right now, the contract is not favorable to the city. The other thing I'd like to address is the question about the Friends, communication with the Friends at the various branches. As a member of the Library Advisory Committee, Santa Barbara's rep to it, I have gotten to know the the folks who are the Friends of the library in the branches, and all I can tell you is, there is a serious rice bowl mentality that they reflect. They are looking in their own rice bowls, and they do not really reflect the interests of the county as a whole. So I don't know how you deal with that, but it is a reality when the director and Mr. Casey deal with them. So that's what I wanted to tell you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Joan Young, you'll be followed by Michelle Allen, and Pat Saley will be the last speaker. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Murillo and council members. And I also want to give you a big shout out and a big thank you for going to bat for the city libraries and for approaching the County Board of Supervisors. We're very optimistic it's going to have a good outcome for us, so a big thank you and well done. I'm here in my role as chair of the Library Advisory Board, which is a council-appointed position, and I'm here to make recommendations to the council, because that's part of my responsibility as a Library Advisory Board member. So I'd like you to remember that our library was begun in the late 19th century as a center for civil discourse, learning, education, and literacy. And you can see where we are today in the 21st century, and we have so much more we want and need to do for our community. My words to you are similar to what I said here two weeks ago. We need you to sustain and help grow our libraries in the city of Santa Barbara to reach the underserved in the West Side, on the Mesa, and in other areas where people can't come to Central or East Side to reap the benefits of the programs that enhance literacy, that enhance civic engagement, and all of the benefits that we currently enjoy at Central and East Side, and what the library is providing at the county branches. In times of scarcity, we have very few choices, and one of those choices may be a hard choice, to cut the cord with managing the county libraries, or to ask for the right amount of money to fund the libraries, the county libraries, for the hours that they choose to stay open. And it's hard. It's a hard time for all of us, because the library is so central. So I would encourage your support of library plaza development, because it's an area for revenue generation. I would encourage your support of receiving the right amount of revenue for the services we provide for the county libraries, and to continue the work that our library is doing and the professional services and programs that we currently provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I am the president of the Santa Barbara Friends Library Organization, and I'm not sure what rice bowl means, but I can tell you that our level of communication with the library staff is tremendous. We have Jessica and Jace Turner at every meeting that we have. We meet month, once a month. And I'm here because I was very much aware of what's going on. Now, there is a difference between the Friends Board and and how they look at this and our Friends members, all right? Our members don't want to be providing money that they feel that the city should be. Our board members just want to be a blessing however we can, all right? And we are trusting you folks to do the right thing. If you think of Santa Barbara as like a body, we believe that the library is the heart and the lungs, and they're, those are very important organs to a city or a person. But we also believe that you folks are the brains which keep it all going, and we are believing that you will govern yourselves accordingly. And if you have any questions about Friends and how it works, I'm totally open to answering whatever I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Sneddon does have a question. Come on back.
Thank you. Thank you. As a Friends group, are you also communicating to the county or to other entities? I know there's a recent letter that went out, that we've received several letters encouraged by the Friends of the library, which you have.
Yes, we're always informed when the county's going to be meeting and invited to participate and discuss. I work full-time. I'm not always available to do that, but we have different board members that are very interested and do attend, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hart?
We just recently received a number of emails from folks expressing support for funding for the library. Was that generated through the Friends? Is that where that's coming from?
Yes, it was. We use constant contact as a way to reach out, and we've managed over the years, even though some of our members are are on the older side, which I would be included in that. Everybody seems to be using email now, and we're getting email addresses, so we have a large amount of our membership that we're able to to reach by email.
So was there a form letter that was sent to folks to say, send this to the council?
No, there was a suggested wording.
Okay.
Guilty.
And and the point of that was, you know, because the the letter basically said, fund libraries. And, you know, we are funding libraries, and the budget proposes to fund libraries. There's no proposal to cut funding for libraries. So I think this is an example of a little communication refinement would have been better, because, you know, the issues are complicated, and what we're dealing with isn't so much the city's support for libraries as it is our partners' support for libraries.
Yes.
And so, you know, I think that energy and effort might have been better focused on where the problem is rather than.
The county.
Well, not necessarily just the county, it's all of our partners. This is this is a partnership that isn't working as well as it should. And this challenge, this communication challenge, is the biggest part of it, I think, honestly. And so I just would encourage the Friends to think about how to best engage in that communications challenge. And that's, I noticed those emails, and I thought to myself, hmm, what exactly is trying to be communicated to me, given what's actually going on? And I didn't know that that, what I got in the emails was necessarily what you intended or what you wanted us to hear, because we are, we are funding the libraries. We're not proposing any cut of any kind. No one's talking about that, and I think that would have been clearly communicated from our department to the, to you and to the Friends.
Thanks.
So, you know, this was energy and enthusiasm and, you know, want to show your support for the library, and I get that, but we could also use your help with communicating that to the other Friends branches, and for them to communicate to that, to the City of Carpinteria, the City of Goleta, the county, you know, the Montecito Friends, all the other Friends. If they better understood the complexity of this challenge, I think would be better able to help us all.
I agree. Mayor Murillo and Councilman Hart, when I first was president of the Friends of the Library back in 2008 or '09, the fellow who was the president of the Carpinteria group, his name was Forrest, I don't remember his last name, and he's no longer president, he took it upon himself to get all of the Friends presidents together to meet. And based on what you're saying, that might not be such a bad idea.
Definitely. Any way we can improve the communication.
Yeah.
It's critically needed right now.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will take that upon myself to move forward.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Sneddon has something.
Yes. Thank you. Just a follow-up. First, I want to thank you for all you do for the library, and the Friends of the Library contributes a tremendous amount, and I love my tote bags.
I do, too.
Always, yes. So I'm wondering, when you're talking about that members want the funding that they're giving to stay at their local branch, how that fits in with coordinating with other branches and talking to other Friends groups? And I'm not sure if it, I'm just.
Yeah.
Wondering how that fits in with your mission and how you feel about how your funding is earmarked, or you just, you you donate the funding and then it goes to however the city deems best? Or how does, what is the expectation there?
The, we set a budget, and we have our fiscal year aligned with your fiscal year to make it easier, even though our tax year is, you know, January 1. So it's a little complicated, but what we do is, we get a wish list from the library for the programs that they would like us to help fund. And typically, it's children's programs, because that's an easy sell to the public, okay? And so when we create our budget, we include, and this year, $65,000 for the children's programs. On top of that, we set an intention to raise more money, because that's, you know, if you don't set an intention, you're not going to get it. So we have our expenses, which are minimal, and then we set an intention for extra money and the library budget. Then we write checks quarterly to the library for the programs, all right? And we also do, I'll admit, we have a heart for the East Side Library. And so our board, they don't have as strong a Friends group, and we've invited their Friends president to attend our meetings and copy some of the things that we do for fundraising. So we reach out to the the East Side Library to help them. No, we don't care about Carpinteria or Montecito. I mean, we really, our money is going to primarily Santa Barbara, and then when we can be a blessing to the East Side, we reach out to them as well. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't communicate with them, because it sounds like there's a need. Then maybe we can be a blessing to them in some way, just education-wise, because we care about all libraries, but our members are expecting their funds to go to the city.
Good point. And it seems like you can share your knowledge of how to raise money if those other Friends need to know how, okay?
Yes, we're happy to do that. Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And Pat Saley, come on up. Good to see you.
Nice to see you, too. Good morning, mayor and members of the council. My name's Pat Saley, longtime library user. I'm a City of Santa Barbara resident, but I think to keep things a little bit more in perspective, I use the Montecito Library, East Side, Central, and Goleta. So I think not everybody who lives in the city or lives in Montecito goes to exclusively that library. So I understand your budget woes. Everybody has them, but it's not that black and white. I was your rep for about a year and a half on the Library Advisory Committee. I'm a longtime member of the Friends of the Montecito Library. I've been president for three years, and I certainly would echo what your library director said about what Friends groups typically do, and they fund the fun, sort of cream and cherry on top of the pie. But that's not the case here, especially since the state pulled out six or seven years ago, I believe it was. The reality is Friends play a crucial role, and in the case of Montecito, up to 50% of the funding. And nobody wants it that way, but that's, if you want a library, that's the way it is. And I would really like to concur with council members Hart, Hertz's comments, that the Friends groups, for the most part, unless those who go to the Library Advisory Committee, because a lot of good information comes out there, but the majority of Friends group board members, and there's turnover, do not understand how black gold works, how libraries are funded, what the goals are for libraries, to provide services for free and enrichment and such, and what the role is for Friends typically, and then Friends in southern Santa Barbara County. And we had a meeting last Friday with Supervisor Williams and your staff, talking about the Montecito Library's budget and Carpinteria's. And at that meeting, we talked about the very idea Mr. Hart put forward, that we understand staff has very, very limited time. We get that. But it is counterproductive, in my opinion, that the Friends groups are not educated more. We used to have a rep of the library at probably two-thirds of our monthly meetings. We get it, that's not feasible. But once or twice a year, if geographically there were meetings held with Friends members, here's how all this stuff works, Q and A, back and forth, I think it would go such a long way to close some of those budget gaps, because if people understand, and they hear about admin fee, and, you know, oh, that sounds like a lot of money. I now get it, how you get up to 18%. And I admit, it took a while, but I don't think the rest of my board does. And it's hard to convince donors to give money, and if we want to have a vibrant library system, we need the public, we need donors. So I would encourage you to request that your staff, once or twice a year, convene some kind of meeting or meetings, and I think in the long run, it will be time well spent. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Saley. Mr. Friedman, something for Ms. Saley?
Thank you for those those comments, Pat. I would like to propose that to our staff, to look at the possibility of at least once or twice a year, doing that, if it's feasible. The other question I had for you was, I know the Montecito Friends has been, was working to get an endowment, to raise funds for that. Can you give us an update on where you are? Not not numbers-wise, but just what the effort is that you're currently at.
Thank you. I'd be happy to. We are, I can give you some general numbers. We are striving to raise 300, or excuse me, $3 million, and assuming a 5% dividend would raise roughly $150,000 a year. And then we also raise money, sort of the 50, 100, $250 donations. And between those, we feel we can really substantially help fund the Montecito Library. Now, of course, the last six months, we have not done much fundraising. Montecito is really in a crisis, but, you know, the phoenix rising from the ashes, literally. We are about a third of the way there, which is impressive, but we are not ready, as I stand here at the mic, to go really public, because we'd like to get farther into that. And we're very hopeful. We've upped our game in terms of newsletters, and the community is very strongly behind the Montecito Library. It is the heart of the community, and we are hopeful we'll get there, but it takes time, and especially given the last six months.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, that closes public comment, and we're back to the council. Mr. Hart?
I really do think that this communications and even organizing, skill-building, collaborating, staff role is, you know, skill-building, collaborating, staff role is, you know, the most important thing, given the long-term trends that we're suffering from. And having dwindling resources, it's extremely difficult to imagine, you know, having funding to do that. But I think that's something the council needs to think about outside of the city's budget, the library's budget. Because this is an opportunity to leverage those relationships, to leverage that money, to work collaboratively with the Friends and with the foundation, and to get everybody back on the same page and rowing in the same direction. You know, this is not sustainable, what we're doing. And the relationship tension is not sustainable, and is not going to result in success that we're all trying to achieve. I mean, everybody, you know, here today understands this dilemma and wants to fix it, and is committed to doing it. And yet, we're not, the people that aren't in this room are not committed to the same, to understanding the same problem and working together collaboratively to solve it. We are getting to the point where the regional system is really at risk. And there is so much more value to that system, to everyone, than if we all get into our bunkers and just give up on that and walk away from that. And this is the moment to save that or abandon that. I get that sense in hearing my colleagues talking about this, you know, and I get that impression talking to folks at the Board of Supervisors. And, you know, we have been the leader of this system for 100 years. We should give every opportunity to keep that, the integrity of that system together, to have the best possible system for all the residents, including the City of Santa Barbara residents. And I think we need to step up in this moment and find a way to fund that. Because clearly, you don't have the capacity to do that, but it needs to get done. And there's no way to just say, "Go do it." So I think that's another thing we need to add to the list of items that are requests for additional funding.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez, next?
Yeah, I just want to, I guess, ditto everything. Councilmember Hart said, I think he really encapsulated it well. And just kind of thinking about what he said, what we can do moving forward, like getting the Friends of the libraries together. Maybe we should start with a big town hall and do shout-outs to each other for the good things that have happened, share our successes and celebrate those successes. I'd love to see maybe a bi-monthly meeting where we also complain it with a book club and a book reading, either the Santa Barbara Reads or another book. And really look at how we're going to take all of our libraries into the future. You know, the changes we have, the challenges we have with some of the patrons who may cause problems or not attract other patrons, the challenges with moving more towards online. I think it's great if we can get all these resources working together, maybe get different libraries working on different problems, but collaborating the whole time. So that would be my closing remark. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Friedman?
I agree with what my colleagues have said, just in terms of the moment we're at now. Over the next year, there's also another opportunity as well because we have Guelita coming on as the fourth district. We also have the City of Carpinteria is looking at a sales tax generally that could ultimately be used to support their library. So there is a sense of urgency in the public, understanding these issues going forward, especially over the coming year. And I also want to thank the members of the different Friends groups, our own City Library Board, the foundation for coming today to, one, not only say what you're doing, but also express ideas and show that you're a partner with this. I think the Montecito community, hearing from them, what you're doing for your own library, it was important for our council to hear that, that you're invested in not only your own library, but the system itself, as well as our foundation as well. So I'll be supporting that, and I really appreciate everyone coming today and looking forward to having those future discussions. And the other question I had for Mr. Casey is the issue of the museum contract. Ms. Young brought it up. Will that be coming to the council, or how is that going to get discussed?
Yes, as Ms. Cariante said, we're still waiting for information from the museum about their interests, once the current lease expires in August. And I think it'll also come into your discussion about Library Plaza that you'll have as part of the Measure C discussion about whether funding that. But yes, I'm more than happy to bring forward whatever proposal the museum has when the time's right.
Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you. I just can't say enough about what the library means to this whole community. Every time you come with a new update, I learn about more programs and more growth, and for our youth, and for our older community, for everyone. We got so many letters this last couple of days, and some, you know, who'd been patrons of the library for 80 years or more, and I just thank you for that. I truly, truly hope that the individual branches will recognize the worth of all of the programs that are being offered and pay their actual share of what it costs to run those programs. I do share the view that we're in that moment of needing to decide how much we can subsidize those or not. I don't want to put it all on the Friends to coordinate everybody and to meet the gap and goals. I think it was, to hear that really Friends groups in the past, it was the cherry on top, or that the extras, the feel-good. And I don't know that the Friends should be coordinating this massive effort among all the cities to get the funding going to pay into the system. I do think access is, physical access is a real problem in what's happening with the plaza. We already had construction on the walkway up, and then the elevator situation, and then the plaza. And we have all these great resources inside the building, and I think we really need to expedite the plaza as much as we can. So I'm looking forward to looking at that in August and what we can do at least to benefit the library more in for access. Really, those are all my comments, just I'm so appreciative for what you do for our community. And we really do need the other branch libraries to contribute, so we can keep it going.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mary. It's interesting that we're having communication, it's kind of a focal from all these different discussions, and our other agencies on, whether it's Guelita and the airport, Guelita and the library, the county in Tejegus, or now with the museum. And having been on the inside of this from the city's standpoint, I think we have, Mr. Casey's right, we have been clear and direct in how we've communicated. And I'd like to announce at least my support, if not my colleague's support as well, for going forward very clearly and as quickly as possible on the Library Plaza project and letting all parties know that that's really our intent going forward. At least, I don't know, I've got support for that up here, but I believe we do. And I'd like to be very clear about that, because that is a real centerpiece to our community. It's our property, and a thing we've been working for, and Measure C is going to have a lot of hands dipping into it. But I do think it's a very appropriate project to move forward sooner than later. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll start by acknowledging our museum of art as a fine institution that provides a wonderful service for the community. But I'm impatient with their construction staging in the Library Plaza area. We've heard complaints from La Arcata as well. So there's some business concerns in the area. And if there's a way we can ask them to hurry or do something else with that space, it's a real imposition on the public. And it's preventing us from going forward with our plaza project, as I say, even as I acknowledge them as an important institution in our community. And what I would say about the regional system is that would be a great thing to go forward with, if we could work it out. Guelita has left us seeking independence and autonomy. And what I would say is, I look at the Mesa, that doesn't have a public library. Our West Side, I have a dream of a bookmobile going over there and establishing some library homework programming. The North Side, the Good Families of San Roque, we could partner with some schools there, write a new brick-and-mortar library in the West Side. I'm not sure that's possible, but if we were not, if our energy and our resources were not shared with this, in this regional way, we could really focus on our city. I've heard people on the East Side talk about adding a second floor and doing a media center, right? So people have dreams for our city and our library resources. And the more distracted we are with, even as I care about all the branches in this county, we, I would hope we would begin to focus within our city borders and our children and our seniors and the homeless people who need to write up a resume to get a job. There's a lot of good things that happen. Thanks so much, Ms. Howard, for setting the tone about the importance of libraries. So those are my comments. And unless there's anything else, we'll close the, Mr. Casey?
I just want to try to summarize a couple key things that I heard.
Yeah, please do.
One, I heard pretty good support on the plaza project, which you will be able to look at again as part of the Measure C discussions, both at Finance Committee and in front of the whole council. And I also want to recognize the foundation and thank them for offering their support for another major capital campaign at the library, which is fantastic. And so we'll let that play out over the next couple of meetings with Measure C, when you'll have that clearly teed up. I heard Mr. Hart kind of add the desire to talk about an additional position, almost kind of a business development position, to kind of help facilitate this community conversation. So I just want to get a sense, do we want to add that to the list? And then, you know, you can have that conversation, you look at all the other priorities. I just, that was kind of left hanging in the air of one of you expressing a desire to kind of add that to the conversation of additions to the budget, and just wasn't sure if there was other support for that or not.
Well, is Ms. Cariante asking for a new position, a business manager?
No, in Ms. Cariante's defense, she would love to ask for lots of positions. So, you know, I didn't ask departments to come up with additional position requests because the budget is very thin, as I've been stressing all along. I just want to be responsive to Mr. Hart's request and just want to know if there was other council support for that or not. And if there's not, then I don't, you know, in all respect to Mr. Hart, you know, I work for a majority of council when we're talking about budget situations.
Mr. Hart?
Looking for more guidance there.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I think that's absolutely fair. You know, I would hope that we would keep this open as an idea that can get vetted in the context of all the other requests. You know, I think that, you know, we have additional requests from outside organizations, specifically Visit Santa Barbara is looking for $150,000. I think there's the potential to leverage, have this position increase revenues by making the Friends stronger and by working more closely with the foundation. I think that would be a wonderful outcome of this effort. And I don't know that the staff has the capability to do that, given the existing staffing. That's what I'm hearing very clearly, that you can't do that. And I think this is missing, and I think this is, if we don't do this, then we're going to suffer the consequences of having the systems integrate around us, and that that has a fiscal impact on the library. And we can either deal with it in advance and invest in it, and be proactive and try to steer it in a course that has a better outcome, or we can be passive and deal with the results. And I think had we invested in this position a few years ago, we might not be in the situation exactly as we are today. So it, to me, is a strategic decision that the council should, I think, consider. And, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to make it through the budget process because we do, we have a balanced budget today, and we can't add things without subtracting other things. But we have, to me, it bears consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
In light of your remarks, Councilmember Hart, I would support bringing this, if possible, to finance as part of the deliberations. Would it, one is, on the timing-wise, I know we have the meeting on the 4th, but I don't know if that's enough time for you to kind of vet this position. I think our libraries are so integral in terms of what we are as a community, and who we serve, and the resources that it provides, and that we are at a critical year coming up with Guelita coming online on its own, the Carpinteria tax, that the system right now, from what I'm hearing today, it doesn't facilitate communication it needs. There needs to be a lot more that needs to be done. And we have this opportunity coming up over the next course of the year, this year. So I think it would be wise at least to consider it. And would it be possible to have it something on the 4th? I know it's a quick turnaround, but, or, because we're coming up next week, so I don't know if we have time to vet it as part of this year's budget. I just want to, if we can, I want to hear it.
Thank you.
Madam, and councilmembers, this is the first, you know, time we've had this concept thrown out, so we haven't had a chance to talk internally about it. We can vet it, you know, in my mind, just right here, thinking about it, is it a full-time position, is it a half-time position? Are we contracting with someone? Is it, you know, a new full-time employee that's, you know, in the system? I think there's different ways of looking at it. You know, we'll do our best over the weekend to kind of give you some reaction if there's interest from a majority council. Again, I don't want to do a lot of work if Mr. Hart's the only one who's interested in doing this. So that's why I'm kind of pushing this back on you to kind of get a temperature read. Do you want us to at least kind of look into it and have it as part of the mix for your consideration?
Okay, Mr. Dominguez?
I'm also interested, but in part of the presentation, if you do come back, I want to hear more about what resources we have freed up now that we're not serving the Guelita area? Because it seems like there may be some savings there in terms of people's duties. Don't shake your head yet. That's why I'm saying I want to hear about it then. I know you aren't prepared for that, but a lot of people have asked that question. So let's bring that up, so people don't think there's something there. If there's not, it's important for us to hear that.
I think she's shaking her head because Guelita leaving is not creating any money for us. That's, we can hear that plainly.
Mayor Mario, that is correct. As I discussed during the presentation, the loss of the admin fee doesn't equal people that we can cut. We can't cut the arm off of the website designer or the library director. All of those positions still exist, and we still have four branches that we're managing. And again, we have six locations and four supervisors, as it is today.
Okay, and then I'll weigh in that if not this budget cycle, the next for the business manager or Friends coordinator, that if you're asking us, and I see other lights on.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, my understanding, it's not a business manager. It's someone to do that community outreach with, the variety of Friends groups, not just the City of Santa Barbara's Friends groups, to try to build up the capacity of the regional organization.
So once again, we're going to use our resources to build up the branch libraries. Wow.
Let me, I want to draw linkage to what Ms. Cariante just said. We have positions on our staff that exist because we have a regional system. And when we start dismantling the regional system, we will not have those staff. And that is the problem that we're facing, is that we have, we benefit, and everybody else benefits, because there's a greater economy of scale of having a larger operation. And we can go to a model where we cut off all those pieces, and we will have to reduce specialized staff as part of the city's operation in the future. And so this is the moment in time to preserve the economies of scale and to collaborate better, and to figure out how we can communicate better and get our partners to step up financially, and perhaps expand the mission of the Friends, as the Montecito Friends are doing, and have a better opportunity to go forward. Or we can hunker down and quit and walk away and have our partners assume these responsibilities. This is the moment in time to decide, and that's, I think this is framed perfectly for that conversation.
Okay. Councilmember Sneddon?
Thank you. I'm wondering two things now, if you could, might address the economy of scale question. But also, I'm wondering if this is maybe a political ad hoc committee or a smaller delegation of us, who does the outreach and meeting with other groups? I am not sure, again, about creating a position, the function of what that position is in the future, and again, putting our own funding behind it. And I think, I mean, I know I would volunteer to be part of that group, to go and speak with other library groups, if that's appropriate. But also, so that's aside on that position. I'm not, again, clear on what the position would be, and if it would carry past this crisis time, if we could get to a place of understanding with the other branches, or if it is something that is interim to get to that communication point. So that question, I think, for Councilmember Hart, and then also the reality of the economy of scale. How much attrition would it take before we would have to start cutting programs that we're offering for our central library?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Sneddon, that is something that we are constantly reviewing in consideration of the, what's happening within the county. In terms of economies of scale, they really benefit the smaller branch libraries because they pay a very small portion for access to a lot of materials and professional staff. So for the Central and East Side Libraries, we're paying the lion's share for all resources currently. The Guelita Library The GLEDA library, separating them from the Santa Barbara system, they did contribute a large piece of, for example, if we purchased an online database, the GLEDA library would contribute nearly 40% sometimes, whereas the smaller libraries, very small, sometimes less than 5%, 3%. It's very small because it's based on their size and their sphere of influence and the city of Santa Barbara being so much larger, we're really supporting the whole. So the economies of scale in terms of the benefits, it's really for the smaller branches. They reap the most benefits. In terms of looking at positions that we would be able to extricate if perhaps the county system did dismantle, we, there are not that many positions that wouldn't be unique to something that we're doing in terms of, you know, shipment, things like that. Those operations would decrease, but overall, we would still need that website developer. And they, we would just have a better website for the city because they're not having to focus on the branch libraries. In terms of, you know, staffing and positions, it is very lean already within the city system, especially up in the supervisor and management areas. You saw, we have one supervisor dedicated to the four remaining branches. And that position is very heavily subsidized by the City of Santa Barbara already. And so considering positions in the future, that would need to be taken into consideration. How many positions will we pay for that are serving the county libraries and what positions do we actually need within the city?
Okay.
In answer to the other part of your question, too, I don't have any strong sense of what the position should be, how it should be funded and, you know, how it should be structured. I think it could be a contract position. I think there's a, a next year communications strategy that needs to be fulfilled. I don't know that it's necessarily an ongoing one, although I think that this next year could, could figure that out, too, whether that is, it provides enough benefit that it sustains itself, that makes it worthwhile. But I think this is really something that strategically, I, I'm getting the impression that, that our staff, well, I'm not even going to go there. I'm disappointed in, in the, in the, the sense that I'm getting that the staff is willing to let go of the regional systems. And it may be just that we've gotten to the point now with GLEDA leaving, that the tipping point has been reached, but I think we should have had this conversation five years ago before we got to this point. And at this point, I think there still is value in maintaining what exists. And I think that we need to, we need to double down on this effort or it's going to go away.
Thank you. Mr. Casey, so this is a budget discussion today and I think we're looking at this broader issue. If we were to bring that broader issue back, what we're doing with the regional system, what would be the time to do that?
You know, we talked about that when we had the presentation about the administrative fee.
Yeah, please remind me then.
So, you know, the county looks like they're going to hopefully act next Tuesday and fill the gap for the next year, at least at the status quo level. I think we need to come back to you in July or August or September at the latest and talk about how we're moving forward because there are really important decisions. And I understand Mr. Hart's frustration about losing the regional system. I got to be honest, I'm hearing from your colleagues that maybe it's time to lose the regional system. So, you know, you reflected upon staff, but I'm also reflecting it back on you as the policymakers about which way we're supposed to go. So I do think we need to have that conversation. I think it needs to happen sooner rather than later. And I think we need to, may have that fundamental discussion about whether we want to work to keep the regional system in some form alive. You know, there's already talk, Bulton Solving are already saying they want to go with different zones after the next year. So then we're talking, do we stay in the business of managing Carpinteria and Montecito? And I think that's a very valid conversation we should have sooner rather than later. And so I would propose that we back to you in July or August for that.
That sounds good. And to go to what I heard from Councilmember Sneddon, that outreach, that certainly gives all of us as individuals time to talk to our, you know, friends and neighbors, Carpinteria, our friends on the county government, where I'm getting some communications from them. So we can, we can bring it back. So two lights are still on? Go ahead, Ms. Sneddon.
I would just like to say that I, I would not like to do away with the regional system. I'm, I'm, I'm just feeling the, the fiscal pressure that it's not working out right now. And I do support outreach and improving the communication in any way we can. I'm just not sure that I'm behind funding a full-time position to do that into the future. But, but my intention, my hope would be that we could keep, keep the regional system together. I think, I, I just see the benefit for those smaller libraries that, what they will not be able to provide for themselves. And I, it is an awkward role that we have, providing the regional, for the regional system. But if we could continue that in a way that's fiscally sound and makes sense without subsidizing all of the other branches, then I, I would like to see that through. So I, I'm interested in outreach or ad hoc committee or, or something where we're looking at that when it comes back after the decisions are made with the county, so in, into, in the future.
So the question is, can we keep the regional system without the City of Santa Barbara subsidizing everyone else? So that's the question. And I'm just going to leave it there. Right, Mr. Casey? When we, when you come back in July, I mean, if that, if that's what Ms. Sneddon is saying, we don't want to leave the smaller branches and the lurch and how do we, right? We need to end the budget session on this particular department. We have planning and the, I'm sorry, our community development department. And I think we're going to go over an hour on that. So everybody adjust your calendars accordingly. Anything else on library? Mr.?
I hope, no, Madam Mayor, library used to be like one of our shortest budget items ever. It's gotten really big these last couple of sessions.
Sure has. Okay. Okay, good. Thank you, thank you so much, library staff. So, Mr. Casey, while they're setting up, the next budget session will be Monday, June 4th at 2:30 here. And it'll be the Finance Department, General Government Administrative Services, the City Attorney's Office, this, your office, the City Administrator's Office and the Mayor and the Council. Is that right?
And Measure C.
And Measure C. Okay.
And then final council direction will be Wednesday evening, June 6th at 6:00 PM. And that's when we look for final decisions by the council for us to then put together a budget for you to adopt.
Okay, very good. Is our community development department ready? Thanks for waiting. We had a long conversation on libraries.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Sue Gray and I'm the Community Development Business Manager in the Community Development Department. Today, we will be presenting our department budget. It includes a department overview that also includes proposed changes that are in the published budget document. We will then go into the general fund and talk about the proposed changes to the original proposed 19 plan, proposed fee increases, additional requests, key initiatives and performance objectives, and one capital improvement project that's in our budget. And after that, we'll move on to the Affordable Housing Fund, the Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds, and the Redevelopment Successor Agency Funds. Before we start, we just wanted to give you a summary of our development activity. It continues to be strong. If you look at the top line, that's the total building permit applications that we've received from 2010 through 17 and projected for 18 and proposed for 19. We see a little uptick in our projected for this year, up to 3,000. We're cautiously optimistic that we will have that many come in. We've had numerous accessory dwelling unit applications this year and at some point the activity will begin to slow down. So we are, we've made a conservative estimate for fiscal year 19, down to 2,700. This slide shows the planning and building and safety development revenue and it pretty much follows the development activity. It goes up and down. We're projecting a slight increase due to fee, the proposed fee increases. Now for our department overview. This is the entire department, total $23.6 million. The largest portion is the general fund at 51%, followed by the Redevelopment Agency, Successor Agency at 38%. And then the smaller funds, CDBG at 5%, Affordable Housing at 4% and Home at 2%. And this is our current organization chart. We have our administration, our Director George Buell, with three divisions, Building and Safety, Planning and Administration, Housing and Human Services. We have 12 programs with 73.35 full-time equivalents. Part of the proposed budget this year is a reorganization in our divisions. Since 2012, when the Redevelopment Agency was dissolved, the Community Development Business Manager, which is me, took on the responsibilities for the remaining programs that were left over from the Housing and Redevelopment Division. This worked for a while due to the complementary skills of the staff members, my, my being business manager and having worked in human services previously, and Deirdre Randolph, who came up through the Affordable Housing Program and is currently the supervisor. Due to Deirdre's retirement, this is a key position and it allows us to restructure the divisions for long-term succession planning. We're proposing to have four divisions instead of three, no changes to Building and Safety or Planning. However, we would like to split Housing and Human Services from Admin Support. The split would be, the Housing and Human Services would provide programmatic support for the Affordable Housing Program, the Community Development Block Grant Human Services Program, rental housing mediation and homelessness. Admin Support would provide administrative support to the entire department with our accounting function, commission support, other admin support and our graphic design. The reorganization requires two reclassifications and a new position. We're proposing to reclassify the Community Development Program Supervisor to the Housing and Human Services Manager, reclassify the current Community Development Program Specialist Position to a Community Development Program Specialist 2 Position, and then add a half-time Community Development Program Specialist. The increased expenses for the reorg totals about $60,000. The bulk of that is projected to come from the Affordable Housing Fund with smaller share coming from the General Fund and the Successor Agency Fund. We're not asking for extra money from the General Fund. We found that within our existing budget. In addition to the reorganization, we are proposing to reclassify our Senior Building Inspector Positions, there are three of them currently, to Senior Building Inspector Specialty Positions. This is needed to ensure that we have building inspectors certified in stormwater pollution, code enforcement and ADA compliance. There's zero impact to the General Fund for these reclassifications because we are currently allocating money for contract specialty inspectors and we can move that in-house with these certifications. So now we'll go on to the General Fund. This shows the General Fund, $12 million. Planning is the largest, both dollar-wise and staffing-wise, at 5.5 million, 35, 36 full-time equivalents, followed by Building and Safety at 4.1 million. And then the two other divisions broken out, Housing and Human Services, 1.3 million, and Admin, 1.1 million. Since this is the second year of a two-year budget, I will focus on the proposed changes from the original fiscal year 19 plan to the recommended plan that's before you today. These are our General Fund expenditures. As you can see at the bottom, the total difference is $28,531. Salaries and benefits show a slight decrease, about 1%, and that is primarily due to positions or employees who have retired during the past year or resigned. And if they are at step five or four, when we have a vacant position, it's budgeted at step one. So the combined nature of that just resulted in that small salary savings. The Supplies and Services is due to an increase in professional services for building, plan check, building inspections and accessibility training. The increase for the plan check and inspections is to help with increased workload and vacancies. And the increase in accessibility training comes from a designated revenue source, which is the state accessibility fee, and that can only be used for accessibility trainings. The slight increase in special projects, I believe it was 4,080, is an increase in the cost for the Paseo Nuevo trash payments, which the city is responsible for, for many more years after the RDA dissolution, and an increase in our LAFCO fees. And then a very small increase in equipment for some software licenses. Our revenues are projected to go up slightly, $76,000. That is due to an increase in the Building and Safety revenues totaling $100,000 and a decrease in the planning revenues projected at $33,000. The Intergovernmental is a combination of the increase in the state accessibility fee I just talked about. It's increasing 30, from $10,000 to $40,000, so a $30,000 increase, and a decrease in funding for the rental housing mediation program. Our last land development team fee study was completed in 2004. Since that time, we've been estimating our level of cost recovery and we've made adjustments based on the results from that study. For fiscal year 19, we, well, actually, we're starting it now. We're, we're out to bid on a land development fee study. The requests for proposals were issued on April 19th. The deadline for the proposals is today. We expect to take, to come to City Council for contract approval in July and then November 2018, the final report will be submitted and we'll be able to use those results for the fiscal year 2020 budget. So every year, the estimated level of cost recovery and our subsidy is assessed, as I mentioned. We, we, planning at this point is about 40% cost recovery, which is excluding long-range planning, and Building and Safety is 100% cost recovery. The proposed fee changes that are included in the published budget, I'm going to be talking later about additional changes for our fee schedule, but what's in the proposed budget is a 3% increase in most of the planning fees. The goal is to increase cost recovery and further reduce General Fund subsidy. There are also some additional increases in certain fees that you can see up on the board. I'm not going to go over all of them, but there are some that warranted extra additional increases. A couple of new fees, ZIRs without onsite inspections, and actually three fees due to the new zoning ordinance application types. And four revised fees. For Building and Safety, the projection is 3% increase in most fees, although we're projecting no, no increases for electric charging stations or PV systems, and this is to encourage renewable energy systems. And no proposed change for electrical generator or festival wiring, and this is to encourage festival operators to obtain permits, which results in safety inspections of their systems for large gatherings. They're proposing one new fee, Stormwater Pollution Prevention System, and one revised fee, which is a modification of the STUCO application fee. Now I would like to go Now, I would like to go through a couple of additional requests that we are proposing that is not included in the budget that you have in front of you. The first one is for a 1.5 FTE associate planner, and this is to improve the customer service in plan check. This was discussed at the May 8 Finance Committee meeting, and it's projected to be funded by additional proposed fee increases. And these are those proposed fee increases. An additional 5% increase for planning, which would mean 8% total fee increase, and that would generate $114,000 of extra revenue. And an additional 1% increase for building and safety fees, which would mean there would be a 4% across-the-board total. And a new fee for onsite notice for accessory dwelling units for building and safety, which would mean $62,000 of extra revenue. This chart shows the added revenue that would be included. It's higher than the chart I showed previously. The second request is for 1.5 FTE project planners, and this is to help with the major work efforts that were discussed and supported by the planning commission and city council at the joint work session on April 13. These are the major work efforts that I'm sure you're all familiar with from that meeting. And this is an overall chart of how we expect to pay for the two additional changes. As I mentioned, the planning fees and building and safety fees, those are the increases, the 114 and the $62,000. And we plan to pay for half of the permanent project planner position out of affordable housing funds. Prior to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, the RDA housing set-aside funds paid for a half-time project planner to help with housing projects, so we feel that can be done with the successor housing funds as well. And then we project to use our repayment monies from the SIMP fund, which is socio-economic mitigation program fund monies, to help with both the hourly project planner and a portion of the permanent project planner.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, if I could just chime in to make sure you understand what we're presenting to you here. This was not in the recommended budget, but this is in response to council requests on a couple of items. One, how can we speed up the plan check turnaround time? And that's what, from the planning side, those, those top two positions in the previous slide, they showed building and safety. And those would become, would be paid for by additional fee increases, which Ms. Gray outlined. The finance committee reviewed that and was comfortable with that. So that's in response to the plan check side. And then you had a desire that was articulated numerous times, but most lately at the joint meeting with the planning commission about how do you get at some of the policy work that you're kind of itching to do. And so on the planning side, we, we do feel there's a strong nexus to affordable housing that we could pay for without hitting the general fund with the affordable housing effort. The reason I wanted to pause is that there is a third leg to that, and that is the city attorney's support side. And when you hear the city attorney's budget on Monday, Mr. Kalan will explain to you his game plan approach to staff up to meet that demand because without the attorney work, we're not going to be able to get the policy and the ordinance work done. Those will have to come from the general fund. We don't have the nexus to either raise fees or hit affordable housing as much. But, so there's just, there's one more missing piece that's coming at the next budget hearing on Monday for your consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, Mr. Dominguez, please.
So the, this chart, I think it's 34 that shows the major work efforts through 2021. Can you go back or, yeah. How will that be adjusted if we approve these additional staffing requests? Do you have a chart that shows us what the results will be?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, the chart up there that you're looking at is what we anticipate we could accomplish with the additional one and a half FTE project planner positions. So at the joint work session, I presented a couple of options, some with some higher additional staffing requests, and then I showed what we could do with no additional staff. And what the result of the, the motion, the result of what PC and council supported that day was this hybrid approach of one and a half additional project planners that we believe we could move forward these seven major work efforts over the next three fiscal years.
So without having either materials from that meeting, something struck me like the AUD ordinance amendment is still going to take two more years from now, nine more quarters to get that done?
That's correct, Councilmember Dominguez. The phase two portion of the AUD ordinance amendments, that's the third one up from the bottom, that's the ordinance amendments that have to do with incentivizing an increased density downtown and other incentives for housing downtown, like potentially parking reductions and other aspects. Also, taking another look at the AUD program map, there was support to reassess where the priority housing overlay is, and also potentially amending other portions of the map that, based on other planning projects like that in the city of Santa Barbara, two years is a pretty reasonable estimate.
Okay, so I'm guessing a lot of that time is kicking it from council to planning commission and back and different committees, not, that doesn't represent a significant amount of staff time in the sense of you're going to be crunching out codes and ordinances during that two-year period?
A significant portion of that time would be exactly what you described, checking in with stakeholders and various commissions and advisory bodies to the council.
And is, and I know a substantial portion of that work will be done by the city attorney's office, and we'll hear more about that. But I don't know if, if he's prepared to talk about this. But to me, this just seems like it's still too long for what's a major change that I think council has been pushing for, and stakeholders have, have been, I'm not sure what the right phrase is, but very interested in. So if it's not necessarily a staffing issue, then I don't really have anything more to say about it today because I'd like to really help you move along. But if there's anything we can do in terms of staffing to make that happen faster, to catch whatever's left in this development cycle in the city, that would be great.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, I, I think what we're proposing is the staffing response to do it. I think what the chart is showing is the practical reality of our experience of working through a major issue that perhaps a council could drive more quickly by making decisions quickly and that sort of stuff. But the combination of what we're proposing today and what Mr. Kalan is proposing next week is the staffing support to support that process. How long it takes is just the process.
Yes, I mean, I guess to put it in black and white terms, I don't see why this should take longer than next year, at least from a staffing point of view. So if you're saying we're the drag on the system, I'm not going to argue. And it goes to certain votes that we've taken. But I just want to make it, I just want to understand that it's, it can be done faster from your point of view in terms of you have the staff to get it done in 2019. If, if the agencies, committees, boards, and the council are able to calendar it and get it done. I know if PC holds onto it for 16 sessions, it's not going to happen in 2019. But if they can get their work done in one or two sessions without, you know, 30 weeks in between those sessions, I just don't see why that level of change that we've been talking about now for a year and a half couldn't happen. So I just want to make sure that there's nothing we can do today that would speed that up.
Thank you, Mr. Buell.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, there are two things that are happening simultaneously when we look at an initiative like this. We, we have the technical work. Some of that work can be done relatively quickly. You were on the housing task force, and you know that there are some of these amendments that were, that are very easily going to be moved through. And I do want to point out that we have AUD ordinance amendments broken out into two phases, phase one and phase two, and they're in different lines in the, in the chart. The technical work is relatively easy. And, but then there comes the collaborative approach that Santa Barbara has a history for. And we, having experience working on AUD and very complex housing, housing, a very complex housing program, if we're looking at changing the map, for example, taking some neighborhoods out, adding some other neighborhoods in, we can expect to hear from the community. And that's, and what Renee has done is prepared a timeline that's reflective of our history in the past working on a controversial housing issue like this. And so, yes, we can move it at a steady clip, but at the same time, with the engagement that it requires in the community, that's where the process can slow down and has slowed down in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's keep moving.
So we'll move on to performance and work objectives. For the planning division, their project objectives for fiscal year 2019 include work on local coastal program update, average unit size density ordinance amendments, EXELA implementation, the fee study, and continued work on the five-year historic preservation program. For the rest of the programs, I've made tables that outline the key measurable objectives, and it shows where we are falling behind and also where we are in excess of our goals. So these are just for your information if you have questions on it. This slide shows the need for the, the position for improvements in the plan check area. We're below in both of the plan check measurable objectives. Again, design review. The cursory plan check completed objective is very, very low compared to what was adopted this year, and we're proposing to decrease it in the fiscal year 19 budget slightly. And with building and safety, their project objectives are the EXELA implementation, which includes digital plan check, the fee study, and substandard housing enforcement. Building inspection and code enforcement, they are meeting the objectives for most of, of the program except for code enforcement complaints that are closed. And that is also being projected to decrease for fiscal year 19. Records and archives coming in below for commercial plan requests for both commercial and residential, exceeding the document processed goal, and also projecting to decrease the goal for the plan review response. Building encounter, increasing for the faxed and e-permit requests processed, meeting, exceeding the goal this year and proposing to increase it. The permit application expiration notifications, adopted, the goal was 90%. We're projecting to be only at 50% this year, but proposing to go up to 100% next year. And that's due to an hourly building inspector aid position that has helped them get caught up. For housing and human services, the general fund programs, key responsibilities for human services, they have not changed from the prior year, and they're on track to meet the goals this year. For the response to homelessness, the budgetary responses to that include in the budget funding for PATH of $202,100 directly from the general fund that was put in, in the budget this year instead of them asking for it in an additional request. In addition to that, they receive $50,000 in a human services grant. So the total city funding for PATH is $252,100. And there is also $103,555 in the budget to fund Home for Good, which was formerly C3H. The rental housing mediation program serves approximately 1,000 residents annually, 80% in the city, 20% is projected to come from Goleta and Carpinteria. The funding for that program comes mainly from the general fund, the biggest portion because that's the biggest portion of people served. We are receiving $12,000 from the housing authority, $30,000 from the city of Goleta, and $15,000 for the city of Carpinteria. And that program is also on track to meet all their goals. In addition, the housing and her, human services division will be working on the tenant landlord and council, council-directed ordinances for renewable mandatory one-year leases and the tenant displacement assistance ordinance. And the administration division, key responsibilities again is the budget accounting, administrative support, and graphic design. The community development budget includes one capital improvement project, and it is $150,000 funded with general fund capital, and that is to build the new restroom at the new downtown visitor center on Lower State Street. So I finished up with the general fund. Now we'll move on to the affordable housing fund. The affordable housing fund is expecting an increase in the repayments. And actually, that, that figure is of very low estimate. It's likely that at first quarter, we'll go and increase that. There, with, with the Presidio Park option, we're receiving approximately $500,000 a year from that one loan. So a more accurate figure is $1,400,000 for that fund. Salaries and benefits are projected to increase by around $60,000, and that is due to the restructure that I talked about earlier of the divisions. And then what's not in the previous slide is the increase of $61,000 for the half-time project planner. So that will be another. But with the extra revenues, we have plenty of funds to fund that. Key performance objectives, they're meeting all of their objectives this year and added two new ones for next year. We receive both community development block grant and home funds from the housing and urban development. We are an entitlement jurisdiction. So every year, we project what we think we're going to get from the next year. For this year, what's included in your budget is status quo from 18, 853,991. We have since found out that we're actually receiving a 6% increase for the community development block grant funds. So that number will actually, is actually $906,524. And staff will be coming to council to approve the action plan for both home and CDBG and to increase the appropriations and revenues associated with the increase. We also receive some repayments for housing. They were actually from single-family housing rehab loan, loans that were made in the past. We normally budget around $400,000 a year, but as you can see, it varies depending on whether some loans are paid off during that year or not. And these monies can be used for rehabilitation or capital projects only. The community development block grant fund can be used for three purposes, up to 20% for administration of the program, up to 15% for public services, which is combined with the city's general fund human services funds. And at least 65% must be used for capital projects. On March 27, council approved 43 public/human service grants and six capital grants. And the multi-unit rehab projects are, they're approved throughout the year depending on the, the applications we receive in. Home funds, again, we received more than we originally proposed. For this, we received a 48% increase, which is great because, as you can see, back in 2012, we were receiving far more, and then we got a huge decrease, and it's been going up and down since. But this is a good year for us. It totals $168,000.
And that money can be spent on what?
That money can be spent, I'm getting to that slide, actually. The home program income, we budget at $10,000. We're conservative on our estimate. And again, it goes up and down depending on which loans are repaid. And the home funds, both the entitlement funds and the program income, up to 10% can be used for administration of the program, and then 90% must be used for loans or grants to affordable housing projects. That includes tenant-based rental assistance grants, of which we have four now, I believe. They need to target very low and low-income households, which is up to 60%. They need to target very low and low-income households, which is up to 60 percent of the average median income, or the area median income. And finally, the redevelopment successor agency. We expect only a small change in that. The redevelopment agency, when we were moving the positions around for the reorg, ended up getting a very small .05 FTE increase, so that's where that comes from. The goals for the redevelopment successor is to prepare the recognized obligation payment schedule, as well as any amendments that we need to make, to make the bond repayments. The final bond repayments will be made in fiscal year 19, so the, in, next year, if there is any successor agency budget, it'll be a much smaller portion. And to finish up on the capital project, the final bond capital project is the Cabrillo Pavilion and Bath House. The RDA bonds are funding $9.6 million of that project, and to date, 2.8 has been expended. They expect to expend all of their RDA bond funds by the end of fiscal year 2019. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Buell, I think we went over a little bit of this in our joint meeting with Planning Regarding your, you know, your adding of FTEs, plan check, planners, and whatnot, which, yeah, I think was at the urge in council as well, in order to increase our ability to turn over these plans and projects. Is there, are there opportunities to source some of those out, number one? And number two is, and I, this was brought to my attention during our police budget thing, where they could no longer use retirees because of some PERS ruling. Does that affect your ability to use retirees as well in that capacity?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, in the Planning Division, the PERS rules that apply to the Police Department will also apply to our department, just to answer that question straight up. With respect to sourcing out the plan check function, the complexity of the, of our zoning ordinance, it can get very difficult to do that. Now, if there were individuals, typically, the individuals that we could bring back are people who are familiar with the code. Those are typically retirees, and so that creates the conundrum for us. On the other hand, if there was, I don't, I would defer to City Planner Brooke to see if she's had any further conversation with her staff as to bringing on contractors to do zoning plan checks.
Councilmember Rouse, Mr. Buell was alluding to the challenge we have with trying to contact out for zoning ordinance compliance in our building plan check, because it differentiate, there's different zoning ordinances for every jurisdiction in this, in the state, whereas you have one California building code, and so to send out plans for review against the California building code is a lot more standardized. So, we've not tried to do that. I do understand there are some of those private companies who advertise that they can perform zoning ordinance plan review as well. We haven't used any to date. So, and I don't know what cost that would be in terms of relation to adding actual staff to the division versus having professional service contract money. I don't know the different dollar figures there.
Well, I mean, that's understandable. I just think with the boom and bust nature of volume that you get across your desk, it'd be nice to be able to not own FTEs if you didn't have to. But in terms of staff time and effort, and the process as well, is there anything in terms of the scope of what the discretionary review boards have in front of them that could be changed or looked at that would make the process not only more user-friendly, but make it clearer, more efficient, and probably take up less staff time? And I'm kind of alluding to a couple of things that came to my attention about, where ABR or perhaps even HLC look at land use issues, which seem to be out of the scope of it, but I understand in the current situation, we have them doing some of those things. And it just seems like we oftentimes see projects going back and forth in those, in those boards maybe more than they should, and I would imagine that's a staff time suck as well. Can you address that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, the issue that you're referring to, where it sometimes appears that the design boards are going beyond the scope of their authority, I have spoken directly with staff about that concern. I've heard it as well. And we are, we have, we're taking steps to work with the boards, to remind them very diplomatically as to what is fair and within their role of responsibility. If they're going beyond that, it's a matter of staff at the time during the meeting to gently remind the board members of their responsibility and the scope of their authority at that time, so that the scope doesn't creep of the types of comments that are coming back. I know that Senior Planner Irma Unzueita, she is the senior planner overseeing the design boards, and she's working with those boards and with the staff that are liaisons between the Planning Division to the boards. And frequently, I would add, it's remarkable that in Santa Barbara, we have a, we have staff members who are exceptionally well-qualified, and yet, they're, they're coming in, they're being trained up, and then they're being asked to guide and direct individuals who sometimes have served on these boards for decades. And it can be tricky, and yet, we're wanting to give them the confidence and the authority and, you know, the approval to speak up and to help guide that conversation. That having been said, sometimes, even though it may appear that comments are going beyond the scope, sometimes there are good reasons why, so that they can understand, for example, what's happening on the inside of a building that's affecting the exterior design. And that, again, requires knowledge and finesse from a staff perspective to be able to interject at the appropriate time to make sure that the board is staying within its bounds.
Well, I just, yeah, I always like emphasizing clarity of process would make it more efficient, get the process through sooner, and we could drive in some of these fees more quickly towards your budget, as well as keeping the comments down that we receive on the outside about what goes on. But, but I was, once again, I was just wondering about if the scopes are being there. Apparently, you're addressing it as we speak, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're doing what we can.
Thank you.
I had a question about cost recovery. I saw a figure of 40 percent, and then some fee increases. Would that help with cost recovery? Or are you at 40 and not 100 because part of what you do is customer service? It's not all about fees?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. The slide you're referring to estimates that we recover about 40 percent of the costs that it takes to provide the Planning Division services, and that, the fact that we don't recover 100 percent, there's a number of factors why we don't. For one, we don't charge by the hour, so we don't know at this point what a full cost recovery fee resolution would look like. But also, that's been a longstanding policy of the council and the city to subsidize planning services with general fund dollars, so that, because the services that, the design and the development that results from our services are enjoyed by all in the community, and there's a benefit to have design review, not just for the applicant, but for the community. So, that's the reason why we are not, and have not been operating at 100 percent cost recovery. Your question about, would these additional fee increases get us closer? The additional fee increases do generate additional revenue, as Ms. Gray mentioned. However, we intend to spend that money by bringing on another one and a half staff members. So, we're, in that sense, trying to directly fund those additional staff members with the additional fee increases.
Okay. Mr. Friedman?
I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Rouse was talking about, the boards and commissions. I noticed one of the performance measures on D27 was to conduct a training, at least one training for each design review body. What do those trainings consist of? And then, the other, just general comment I had was, some of these commissioners have been on for many, many years, but my understanding is those are term limited, so I guess that's something the council, we need to kind of look at addressing, is unless there's a compelling reason, we need to look at those term limits and how long people have been there when it's come up. I know that's a hornet's nest, but it is something I think we need to look at from our end on it, but if you could answer the question about what those trainings consist of?
Certainly. Councilmember Friedman, the annual training, at least one training, we try to do with each board and commission in the design review section typically centers around decorum, scope of review, logistics of the review, the staff and commission relationship. So, it's, and it changes each year, just depending on what we feel needs to be addressed from year to year. And so, recently, we've been discussing with some of the boards and commissions various ways to relay constructive feedback to applicants and how to interact with each other when there might be differing opinions on the board to come to a motion and a decision more quickly.
Okay, good. Mr. Dominguez?
Regarding the reclassification of senior building inspector to senior building inspector specialty, so is that a, we're moving new positions in-house? I didn't understand the description, what's happening here.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, what we're proposing is to take three existing senior building inspector positions and reclassify them to the next level up, which is a senior building inspector specialty. That specialty is either a certification by the state in accessibility, a CASP certification, or a state stormwater pollution prevention certification, or a California Association of Code Enforcement Officers certification for the specialty of the legal aspects of code enforcement. In doing that, we increase the salaries by that margin of senior building inspector to specialty, but we reduce the amount that we're spending on contract field inspections for stormwater pollution prevention, and it turns out to actually save us money, and we internalize the service, so we have better control of it.
So, the same person's doing the same work, but then you don't have to use a second person? I'm not sure I understand that.
Oh, no. Right now, we're using contract services for our stormwater pollution prevention field inspections. That's the permanent systems that are put in.
So, you don't have an in-house person doing it?
Correct.
So, you're not reclassifying position, you're adding a position, or these just weren't filled before?
So, we've been using contract service for the stormwater pollution prevention field inspections.
Right, I understand that part, but you don't have a person on your staff?
Well, let him finish his answer.
Well, I'm trying to move this along, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Stuffler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Dominguez, what we're doing is we are encouraging our staff to get certifications in these specialties, so that we can then utilize them instead of using contract services that cost more.
Right, but that's not what a reclassification is.
Councilmember Dominguez, these are reclassifications, they are not new positions.
Right, but why are you talking about someone outside of the city's services? I'm missing something here. You're saying we're using a contractor outside, and we're using someone inside to do the same thing? It's, these are apples and oranges, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Casey?
I'll give it a shot. We have building inspectors that go and do general building inspection requirements. We have a stormwater permit system that requires a special certified person to review the installations out in the field. We currently don't have a building inspector who has that certification, so we need to contract with an outside entity to go perform that inspection. What we are doing is we are encouraging and getting our existing staff to get that certification to be able to perform that additional function out in the field. The fact that they have that additional certification, when you compare them against other building inspectors in other jurisdictions, means you pay them a little bit more because they have extra ability to perform those services. So, we think it's a good thing. It's taking existing staff, they're getting certifications, they can perform more functions in the field.
Right, so I understand all that, but what I'm asking you is, so right now, we're using John Q. Private to perform this service. Someone wants a building built, they come to us, and they use this outside contractor.
Only for the stormwater permit.
So, we have, we have someone currently employed for the city, let's say, Mary, and Mary's not doing it because she doesn't have the certification. We're going to give her certification, move her into the specialty position, now she's going to do that work. So, who's going to do the work that Mary was doing before?
She will still do that. The work that Mary, by getting the certification, is just a very small amount of the job, but we no longer need to contract with someone to do that small part of the inspection process.
Okay.
So, we're getting more out of Mary.
And so, Mary wasn't fully employed, because now we're adding some tasks to her daily schedule, which is the certified work that someone outside of our department was doing.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, one of the challenges, as you can imagine, in the field of building inspection, when we literally have two feet of state building standards, codes to enforce, is adjusting the level of specificity of our inspections. We cannot inspect every single code-compliant aspect of all, you know, the thousands of pages of code for every project. So, we ask our inspectors to use their intelligence and to adjust their scope of their inspection and fit it within the timeframe that they have. So, Mary will be doing more specialty work in one area, and that will be compensated by doing a more general inspection to a certain extent somewhere else. That's just the nature of trying to continue to provide inspection services with an ever-expanding number of regulations that we have to assure compliance with.
Right, and really, I'm just focused on the workload aspect of this.
Right.
And what will this end up costing the city? It sounds like it's pretty marginal.
This will save us money, because we're spending a premium amount on the contract service that we're receiving.
And regarding the other new position, the .5 FTE CD program specialist, we, I think you said this was about a $60,000 increase to the budget, and, but you didn't explain why we're creating this new position.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the $60,000 is a combination of the reclassifications and the new position. The need for the half-time Community Development Program Specialist is to, and the reclassification of the current program specialist to a specialist two, those two things are needed so that a previous supervisor position can move into a management role and give up some of the work that she's been doing as far as the HUD requirements and things like that, increase the responsibilities of the person in the current specialist position, and then give her a little bit of help to do the routine preparation of meetings and things like that. So, basically, what it's needed so that a previous supervisor position, who wasn't responsible for preparing the budget, coming to council, reporting to George, and dealing with homelessness, the response to homelessness, so that that person has the time to do that as a manager, whereas before, as a supervisor, they were more involved with the CDBG Human Services Program.
So, are we adding in new projects? Is there more work being done?
There's not more work being done, it's just breaking up the work, because my position as business manager, I'm moving back to just being a business manager. I haven't had time in the last six years to really devote my time to the budget, to do a lot of other things that George would like me to do, because I've been managing some programs as well.
So, I guess where I'm still confused is why we're going to spend more money without more work being produced. It seems like if you've been doing it for six years and nothing's fallen through the cracks.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, it's not a matter of more work being done, it's that, well, no, there is work that is not being done. We haven't had the benefit that other departments have, for example, of a dedicated business manager, especially going into next year, or right now, where we're going into this fee study. It's going to require a steady hand, and a qualified steady hand, to herd all the various departments that are participating in this fee study. And in another department where there's a designated business manager, that person is available much of the time to manage a major project like that. Knowing that Sue is juggling both human services, housing, and the business management aspect, she doesn't have enough time to do her job well right now, and so, we're looking at providing relief in particular to Sue, who's taken on these additional responsibilities that were given to her in the wake of redevelopment.
Yeah, I was just gonna, if I could chime in, it's a little personal, because she's sitting right here, but in the, in the wake of the redevelopment agency dissolution, we scrambled about how to put Humpty Dumpty back together again with the division and with funding and such. And so, we took Sue, who is a very talented business manager and also wears a homeless hat, and said, guess what? Not only are you going to be our business manager and wear your homeless hat, you're now going to be a division manager as well over Housing and Human Services and run the whole division. Sue is uniquely qualified to do those three very different, separate things. It's not a sustainable management structure if Sue is ever to retire. It's not a sustainable management structure if Sue is ever to retire. And unfortunately, at some day, Sue is going to retire. And so we are kind of now, post-RDA, right sizing the organization back to where it needs to be. This department is big enough and complex enough that it needs a business manager who can do that. Whereas at the same time, we have a very active homeless and human services program that needs to be managed as well.
And I have to say, I've been lucky enough to work with Ms. Gray on several things within the city, having been the liaison with the committee and also with the PATH Neighborhood Partnership. And she does amazing work, and it's some of the most important work the city does. But I'm really asking in more of a generic sense, you know, can a business case be made to the council why we're adding a new position? And I just didn't think it was done, and I'm still not sure I understand. You're saying your department needs a business manager, I understand that, but I'm not sure I understand how this gets us there. It seems like she was the business manager, you're adding another division into that that she was already doing. So again, I'm just having trouble with the math. It doesn't really, it's not a simple case to be made, and maybe that's part of the complexity of the situation, but...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, when I was just, when I was a business manager, I, as Mr. Casey and Mr. Buhl explained, able to provide a lot more support to the other division managers as well as the department director, who was Mr. Casey at the time. Because I also had worked in human services, I was the supervisor at one point, I was a specialist at one point, I had a unique knowledge of that program, so it was easy for me to slip back into that. I also happen to be good with numbers, that's not a normal trait, I don't think, for a person to be good at the human services stuff and the budgetary stuff. The only reason it worked for six years is because Deirdre Randolph and I, we have very complementary skills. She had very strong affordable housing skills, which I didn't have. With her retiring, that, we could just hire another supervisor for that. And then in two to five years, I retire, you're going to have a supervisor for the programs, you're not going to have a business manager at that point. So then a reorganization is going to happen. We thought it would be prudent to do it right now, because I'm going to be around for several more years to help ease the transition, I guess, of the new manager, while also being a business manager and providing support for these big things that are coming up, primarily the fee study and the EXELA implementation. So I think it's a very timely time to do it, because of my age, Ms. Randolph is leaving. And she quietly does an amazing job behind the scenes. She is on every contract, every transaction, and that in itself is going to be hard to replace for the city. So we need to, we can't have someone come in and give them the pressure of everything on them. I don't think it will work.
And I have to say, my experience with Ms. Randolph has been exceptional as well. I just hate to be in the position as a council, as an oversight body, making reorganization or reclassification decisions kind of at this personal level. I'd much rather see job descriptions and a fuller explanation, so maybe in the future, we can get more information before a public session like this, because it puts us in the uncomfortable position where it may look like we're rubber stamping a department's request for more funds without an adequate background. So that's my main concern.
We have the study, it's been done, it's gone through human resources, you know, they set the salary and things like that. So we could send you the job descriptions if you'd like.
Thank you. Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you. I'll try to make these quick. Can you help me with, on page D-23, the long-range plan, and sort of reconciling that with slide, oh, sorry, 34? And just, are we on track with all those? I think I, I'm just not aware of what some of the terminology is between the two, to help me match them up.
Certainly, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Sneddon, so the long-range plan and special studies, our annual performance plan, that entire section works just on long-range project objectives. And so that sheet you're seeing there with the various bullet points, the first one is to complete the LCP program update project. That is not shown on the chart there, because the chart on slide 34 is showing the additional major work efforts that we would be taking on in the upcoming fiscal years. The LCP update has been an ongoing project for the last four years, and it's our hope to have that wrapped up in the next quarter or two, well, this particular phase of it. The next several bullets are annual reports that staff in this section prepare. And so these project objectives, you see pretty much every year, preparing our general plan implementation, adaptive management program report, as well as submitting our annual progress report to HCD, preparing our general plan EIR monitoring report, those are things we do every year, ongoing. Preparing a climate action plan implementation report is another annual report we prepare. And then the very last bullet is completing several work efforts to get us closer to updating our climate action plan, which is not identified as a major work effort that we would be taking on in terms of wholesale updating our climate action plan, but we do need to make a couple of amendments to it. So that last bullet is an addendum to the climate action plan that we believe we can do with existing staff. And so it wasn't part of our request at the work session for why we would need additional staff to complete anything on this chart that you're seeing here.
Thank you. And then are we on track with the D-23 long-range plan and special studies? The dates that are there, are we approximately on track with that?
The LCP update is, is behind. This objective was to have the, this initial phase of the project work product by June 30th, 2019. As you might recall, we had been geared up to come to council with the LCP update in April, and we had to delay that due to issues with public notification of that work effort. And so we are cycling back with the planning commission, hopefully in the next four to six weeks. So that is a couple months behind at this point. The rest are on track.
Thank you. And then I had just two more questions. One is quick, I think, but the, you said, you mentioned numerous ADU applications, I'm curious how many? And then you mentioned that you expect them to taper off, and so I'm just curious what the numbers are right now and what you expect them to taper to.
Certainly, Councilmember Sneddon, I hadn't run the report since our council hearing on the ADU ordinance. At that time, I believe we had about 350 applications since January 2017. So that was more than one calendar year. The reason we believe them to taper off is, we understand there was an initial rush, excitement about the state law that sort of paved the way to permit these ADUs more easily. And so we saw that, we believe with locally adopted regulations, that will taper off over time, just simply because we have local regulations that we decided augment and change from state law. And also, just as this becomes more of a matter of normal development in the community, there's not that initial rush to try to get in and get permitted.
Thank you. And then just one more question about enforcement. Can you just tell me a little bit about how it works? Someone calls in, and they have a complaint, or is it usually generated from the public or from the permitting process? And do you feel you have enough staff for enforcement? And just, we hear a lot about enforcement, if you could just comment on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, enforcement is one of those programs that you can never provide enough staff for. Probably the same situation in the police department, there are always more calls than you can get to. That said, our enforcement process initiates with a complaint or a request that we receive from a member of the public, or that we observe ourselves, that we feel is a vague, a bad violation that we need to address immediately. We enter that into a system, and then we prioritize it immediately based on three levels. It's either an immediate hazard to the community or people, a moderate or potential hazard to people, or very low hazard. This is how my shop in building and safety does this. And then we respond to those immediate ones immediately. And then we obviously go to the ones that are the potential violation, or potential hazard next. The volume of work is very high, and traditionally, we've had our building inspectors in building and safety doing both building inspection and code enforcement. So when we have periods of a lot of building permit issuance and a lot of building inspection demand, like we've had for the last several years, that competes with the demand for code enforcement, which has also been ramping up. So this can lead to us to a situation like we have now, where we don't get to a lot of the low priority, and we don't even get to some of the potential hazards that are out there. We kind of screen those and even rank them within their own category, the potential ones that are likely to be really bad versus the potential which may not. And that's how we result with a really low identification of the violation or closing of the case performance factor. I'm not sure if you want more. Okay.
Okay, good. Do we have any public comment? Ms. Raisin, I see you sitting out there. You're good?
Educating myself.
Okay, very good. Okay, so it's back to the council for any comments on this department. I can see when it's the second year, things are streamlined a little bit, so. I don't see any lights. Mr. Dominguez?
I want to start by saying, there have been some great accomplishments by the department. I think overall, things are running, running really well, and I think your staff is some of the hardest working staff in the city. I've mentioned a few particular examples who are just shining stars. I am concerned, though, about, I guess, how long it took to react to some of the major work efforts, things that have been ramping up. And then, once they did ramp up, I'm not sure if we've done as much as we could to deal with them as timely as we could. I'm concerned that there's a lack of recognition of that. I, and this is not just this department, just spoiler alert, on Monday, I'm going to bring up some similar concerns about getting things done timely with the city attorney. And at the same time, I may have kind of a, I guess, critical or worried tone about that. You know, I've also been pushing the council to help and provide as many resources at every opportunity to address some of these concerns. I'm concerned that the P-3 measures, a lot of departments seem like they put in a lot of work to provide substantive, serious revisions to their P-3s or add new ones in. I didn't see that as much from this department. So there are concerns with the customer service. You've done some things, which I acknowledge, to help the accelerate program, I think is great, but I just wonder if we could even push the envelope a little bit more? These are really trying times, particularly with the demise of retail. And I'd love for Santa Barbara to really think outside the box and really try things that other communities have tried that work, and then also try to come up with some innovation. I think we have some of the most creative, imaginative staff, so if we can unleash some of that, it would be great. So I'm concerned with the time, having one and a half new project planners. If it turns out, most of the bottlenecks are council-inflected or stakeholder meetings, I think we just need to do better at scheduling those in an efficient manner. You know, it's almost June, and we could probably do enough stakeholder meetings this year to get something as focused as the downtown residential thing moving forward. I don't think it should take two and a half more years. I think there's enough consensus where we have meetings, learn things that we might need to learn, but I think we can do that this year and get things started next year and finish next year. So there's enough of a community push and enough of an urgency, I think, to move something like that forward. And I think stakeholders will appear in a rapid succession. I don't think they're going to want to see this take eight years. I think there is that sense of urgency. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you. I just want to say that I support the restructure. I think that is a pretty fundamental change. And Sue, thank you for the work that you've been doing of three people, and anything that moves towards more efficiency and being able to streamline the work that people are doing. And also, thank you in general for your responsiveness and including the additional planning positions and then the funding needed to cover those positions. And I do want to continue to support, if you need additional staffing, to keep up with that responsiveness to the public. And particularly with planning and with enforcement, those seem to be the areas that we hear the most about. And so just to keep that open, that, see how this goes with the additional 1.5, but I've heard that we maybe need more, and we'll keep that open. But thank you for your responsiveness on this.
Thanks. Mr. Friedman?
I just wanted to say that I just support the restructuring as well and appreciate the background that you provided on it. And the work that you're doing to train our boards and commissions so that they understand their scope and within their mission, I think that's really important. It gets to, I think, part of what Councilmember Dominguez has been raising about the backlog, where you go to multiple meetings, whether it's something, a big policy issue, or just an applicant going through. So I think that's a big part of it. And then the 1.5 positions, I think that's a start to move some of these projects along. In addition, getting Councilmember Sneddon's comments, as the state is shifting the housing conversation, I think we will need to get periodic updates from you on that, and if we will need some more staffing at some point, because we don't want to get in a position where the state puts in another mandate and we're two, three years behind. So we'll just need to monitor that as that goes and have those discussions at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll say that I don't disagree with Councilmember Dominguez. Of course, we want it all to happen more quickly, but what we aren't benefiting from today is the long and painful discussion that we had at the joint planning commission meeting. So I see your timetable, you know, sprinkle fairy dust on you, work as hard as you can, but I know you're doing that already. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Any other comments? We'll adjourn this meeting then. Thank you.